Order, tonight is a special meeting of the city council. Monday, November 22nd, 2021. We have a short agenda. Well, we have only two items on the agenda, but it's not necessarily short. I'll put it that way. And as you can probably see, for folks who are tuned in from home, we are once again primarily remote. And we'll get into that in just a minute. But what we'll do first here, we're going to call the role of the council and establish the folks who are here. Mr. Brillard, if you could please call the role. Beloga.
Present.
Carter.
Present.
Coulter.
Present.
Lowman.
Present.
Martin.
Present.
Nelson.
Here.
Bussie.
Here.
Records show all seven members of the council are present. Myself, Mayor Bussie, and Councilmember Lowman are in the council chambers. And councilmembers Beloga, Carter, Coulter, Martin, and Nelson are remote. As I said, we've got two items on our agenda tonight. And what I would like to do, council, if it is to your approval, I would like to rearrange the items on the agenda. We've got the two items. We've got 2.1, which is the 2022 budget and tax levy discussion, and 2.2, which is to acknowledge the determination regarding telephone or interactive technology meetings. In my mind, those probably should be switched, I think logically, to explain what we're doing here and why we're here. And so I would move that we switch up the agenda to move 2.2 to the first item and 2.1 is the second item. 2.3, the city manager and council updates remaining the third item.
Second.
Got a motion in the second by Councilmember Lowman to do a bit of agenda reorganization. No further council discussion. Mr. Brillard. Beloga.
Aye.
Carter.
Aye.
Coulter.
Aye.
Lowman.
Aye.
Martin.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Bussie. Aye. Motion carries 7-0. So with that, we will move forward with our agenda. And item 2.2 is the acknowledgement of the determination regarding telephone or interactive technology meetings. As if you, again, as I said, if you were watching at home, you can see that just Councilmember Lowman and I are in the council chambers and the other councilmembers are remote this evening. And that reason, the reason for that is obviously the fact that COVID numbers are unacceptably high here in the state of Minnesota. And actually, we're leading the nation in transmissions of the disease. So we have to formalize this and make this official. So Mr. Verbrugge, if you could please just kind of explain how we came to this point and how we're able to do this officially.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. Good evening. I appreciate the question and I want to explain what this action is. And I also want to explain what this action is not. What the determination is saying is that it is, it creates a practical difficulty to effectively and efficiently conduct public meetings, given the current conditions of COVID-19. So what that means is that we have been seeing that either commission members or council members are sometimes unable to attend in person after the agenda has been posted. So we usually post our agenda on Thursdays. And we have had it come up that members have had an exposure or an illness in the household that prudence requires them to not go out and be in public, or they're awaiting a test result. And if that happens after the agenda is published, we can't meet the statutory requirement of having an address other than the meeting location where those individuals can participate. And frankly, even if we did have a publicly accessible address for those persons to participate, it wouldn't be wise if they are in the circumstance of having to quarantine or, you know, limit their exposure to other people. And so while we are in this condition where we're having, you know, the continuing high numbers of transmission, high numbers of cases throughout Minnesota, but even more specifically in Hennepin County and in Bloomington, it is, it's a determination of me as the chief administrative official that to make sure that we're not running into potential quorum issues, this is the most prudent action to take for the time being. The public is still allowed into the building. They are allowed into the chambers if they actually want to attend the council meeting in person. What this action is saying is that for the time being, however, the members will be able to participate virtually without having to be in a specified publicly accessible location. What this also is not is an emergency declaration for the city that is going to affect other operations. So we are not at this time proposing to limit access to Civic Plaza or any of our government facilities. The determination that's before the council is simply related to the conduct of public meetings. I'll stop there, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. Allow, if you have any additional questions about the statutory permission or anything from a legal perspective, the city attorney is also available to answer questions.
Council, any questions regarding this? And since we're back to the future here, please remember to wave your hands around or use your hand raise function on your button so we can see exactly who might have a question. Do we have any additional questions? I think that explains it pretty well. So if there are no questions, council, I would look for a motion to acknowledge the city manager's determination regarding conducting meetings by telephone or interactive technology.
I'll move.
Second.
We have a motion by, I think, was it Councilmember Coulter? I'm sorry. Councilmember Coulter, second by Councilmember Carter, to acknowledge the city manager's determination regarding conducting meetings by telephone or interactive technology. There are no further council discussion on this? Mr. Brillard. Beloga.
Aye.
Carter.
Aye.
Coulter.
Aye.
Lowman.
Aye.
Martin.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Bussie. Aye. Motion carries 7-0. Thanks for that explanation, Mr. Verbrugge, and thanks for crafting this in such a way that we can keep everybody safe until we can get to the other side of this once again and still keep our meeting schedules as we need to and keep doing the work that we need to get done here today. I appreciate it. Thank you so very much. With that, we'll move on to item 2.1, which is a discussion of our 2022 budget and tax levy. This is, this is going to be a presentation by staff. We'll be giving direction to staff regarding the proposed 2022 tax levy, general fund budget. In addition to the non-general fund budgets, like the enterprise funds, communications, and fire pension. This is not a public hearing. We do have our truth and taxation hearing coming up on December 6th, I believe? December 6th. So we'll have plenty of opportunity to receive public comment on this and get all kinds of feedback from the residents of Bloomington. But for now, this is basically an information item. And based on the information that we did receive, this is an extensive information item. There's a lot to this and a lot of very good information. I do hope if anyone watching has any questions about the budget or any misconceptions about the budget, any lack of knowledge or want to learn more, this is a good presentation to sit through. It's going to take a while. There's a number of slides. I think I counted 50-plus slides on this. But this is an outstanding presentation as to how we got to where we are today. So with that, I will turn it over to Kari Carlson, our budget manager, to lead us through this. Good evening, Kari, and welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Thank you. Yes, so tonight I will be presenting detailed information about the proposed 2022 tax levy and budget. And there are 30 funds that have annual budgets that the council approves every year. And so far this year, council has approved 23 of the fund budgets for the, for 2022. And so there are seven remaining. And those receive property tax support, the biggest being the general fund. So here is the agenda for this evening. Since there is a lot of information that we will be discussing, I will stop between each section, see if the council has any questions or comments. You can also just stop me at any time if you would like some clarification right when I'm presenting. That's completely fine. This is set up as a, kind of like a study session type meeting and with discussion. So just let me know. And there are also representatives from all the departments that are on the meeting online. So they are available for any questions that you may have as well. So here's the, here's the outline for tonight. So I'm going to start by sharing some information, kind of a review of the preliminary 2022 tax levy. And then I'm going to share our proposed, staff's proposed changes to the preliminary levy. And then I'll get into a general fund expense, like details by department that includes if there's any staffing change requests. And then after that, I'll share a current model of the council's strategic priorities fund. And then I'll review the four recreation enterprise funds, which is golf, ice garden, art center, and aquatics. And I'll review the communications special revenue fund and the fire pension revenue fund. And as I said, those, the detailed requests include proposed staffing changes. So I have about three slides just to compile those. You can see in summary what those staffing changes look like and also split out by full-time, part-time, and reclassification of position. And then I have updated information for the proposed tax levy and impact on the median value. I have a projected 2023 tax levy. So of course, that's just the projection. But based on if, if you are in agreement with what staff is recommending, I have a projection of what the 2023 tax levy would look like. And then towards the end, I have feedback to share from residents. We had the two public engagement sessions on the budget in October. We also have a project card up on Let's Talk Bloomington, where residents can answer questions and give input. And then also just some feedback from residents that I received from emails or phone calls that we'd like to share with you. And especially during those October public engagement sessions, we had said that one of the questions is there's some advice that you would like to share with the council as they make these decisions? So we said that this is, this is the night that we'd be sharing that information. So I'll go through all of that. And then finally, then we, back on November 8th, we were talking about a plan for public participation in next year's budget process. And so I have a recommendation from staff as well. So.
Kari, if I could just interrupt just for a second. When you drop your voice, I think you're kind of dropping out a little bit. And I'm having a hard time here.
Oh, okay. Okay, I'll try to speak louder and closer to the microphone.
That would be helpful.
Is that better?
That's much better. Thank you.
Good luck. Okay, thank you. Okay, so get going. So just to review for the preliminary property tax levy, it was set by the city council on September 13th. The amount was almost $68.3 million. That was the tax levy. And that amount is a 2.75% increase from the city's 2021 tax levy. And that's an overall increase of $1.8 million. And the total city tax dollar amount is allocated among properties based on their value and type of property. And also, other information is Hennepin County's preliminary levy was a 3.5% increase. And the Bloomington School District had a 1.4% increase for their preliminary levy. And so why do many residents in Bloomington have a proposed tax levy increase that's more in a 5% to 15% range? When I just said the county's preliminary tax levy was only 3.5%. The city was 2.75%, the school district 1.4%. And the reason for that is that for 2022 property taxes, as we've discussed many times before with the council, there's been an overall shift in the amount of taxes paid by residential properties as the strong demand in the housing market has increased the values of many homes in Bloomington and around the metro, while commercial properties saw a decline in value due to the pandemic, mainly in the hotel, lodging, and retail sector. And so Minnesota property tax collections are complex, to say the least. But overall, properties that have higher values pay a higher portion of the tax levy. And so then I, next, I'm going to have three pie charts to share with you. And the assessing division gathered this information for us just to show how these preliminary taxes look as far as an increase from last year. So this first one's going to be single-family residential. I also have one for apartment buildings and also one for commercial industrials. You can kind of see the shift take place. So the way that this pie chart is set up is this is looking at how much the property taxes increased for, this is a single-family residential property. So we start with a light blue and we'll go clockwise. So there's a portion of residents, single-family residential properties that had a tax decrease compared to last year. That amount is about 3%, so it's not very big. But then the orange, that's 17% of homes that had an increase between 0% and 5% of their property taxes. The biggest part is 55%. That's the gray, where they experienced a property tax increase between 5% and 10%. And then in the yellow, between 10% and 15%. And then the dark blue is more than 15%. And that is also 3%. So you can see it's, not all single-family homes are experiencing the same property tax increase, but the majority, it's between that 5% to 15% range. Now we'll go to apartments. This looks different for apartments. And the renters that are living in apartments are not paying property tax directly, but they pay rent and the apartment, and that goes towards property taxes. So just showing for apartment buildings what the increases were. And so that light blue is 10% of apartment buildings had a decrease taxes compared to last year. For the orange, that's, the majority of it is between 0% and 5%. And then a smaller portion, 7%, is in the gray there. That's between a 5% and 10%. And then for the more than 15%, the dark blue, that's only 4%. So it's a lot different for the apartment buildings. The majority you can see there in orange is between 0% and 5%. And then we see commercial industrials. This is what we're talking about when the shift of property taxes is coming from commercial industrial to residential. So for commercial and industrial, 58%, and that's the light blue, have a tax decrease compared to last year as their values have come down. And then between 0% and 5%, that's a 20%, 26% in the orange there of commercial industrial properties. That's their percent increase. And then 5% to 10%, that's the gray there. That's about 10% of overall of these properties. And then it's a pretty small, for the yellow, that's only 1%. Between 10% and 15%. And then dark blue, that's the more than 15%. So you can see that's, between those three types of properties, it's quite a bit different. Some other information about the city of Bloomington's preliminary 2022 tax levy increase compared to these other 15 comparison cities within the metro, Bloomington's was the lowest increase. So we're talking about how much did we increase our overall tax levy compared to last year for the preliminary? So the average of all these other cities is six point, a little over 6%, 6.05%. And so you can see the other cities are ranging from just a little over 3% all the way up to a little over 10%. And then this is, when we take that preliminary $63 million and divide it up to city services, and then look at how that would equate for a median value home, that is a value of $307,200. So on a monthly basis, the city tax would break out to $101.28. And you can see that the majority of that is going to be for police, fire, and public works. And then also, that this information would just be helpful just to show, back to 2015, these are the preliminary tax levies and then what the final tax levy was. And then we have what the preliminary tax levy percent increase was from the previous year. And then what the, what the final tax levy increase was from the previous year. So, you know, back in 2015 there, the preliminary tax levy increase that was approved was 4% and it stayed at 4%. And those other years, it started off higher, like 6.85 or 7.72. For the final levy, it was brought down. Just looking at last year, the preliminary was 5% and then the final was 2.75%. And then here we are today, is that, that $68.3 million preliminary tax levy is a 2.75% increase. But before I go on to what we have as proposed changes, are there any questions or comments about that information?
Council, questions, comments on this? I am not seeing any hands up.
Okay.
Let's continue. Oh, Councilmember Lowman, the only guy in the, in the room who I didn't look at. I was looking at the screen. The person sitting next to me here.
I just put my hand up, so you're, it's fair on that one there. You know, one of the things that I wanted you to look at, Kari, was when you look at the comparison cities in terms of our 2.75 increase, you know, that we're looking at. When we try to compare our city levy increase in terms of what it means for residents, I know the composition of what other cities look like, you know, specifically their residential, commercial breakdown, and then also the impacts that they have can be a little bit different. And I wanted to just dwell on that a little bit and see if you wanted to comment on that, either you, the mayor, or the city manager, in terms of, because I think this is important for the general public, if they're looking at this, to kind of understand that, you know, a 2.75 is not always the same thing other places that you go. So I just want to bring that forward to, just so we're clearly talking about apples and oranges and that type of thing.
Mr. Verbrugge?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. I'll, I'll take a swipe at this first and then if Kari wants to add some information, that'd be great. I think Councilmember Lowman, what you're asking about is the differentiation of tax bases between cities. And for Bloomington, we are unique among cities in that we have a majority of our tax base is not single-family residential. And that really is a differentiator between other communities. We have a very strong commercial industrial sector of our tax base as well as having a strong multifamily residential component to the tax base. And so why that's important, especially in a year like 2021, going into pay 2022, is that the, the tax valuations for those various sectors are experiencing very different adjustments. So the single-family residential market is very hot right now. I don't think I have to explain that to any residents that they're seeing, whether it's their own experience or their neighbors. You know, homes in the neighborhood are selling very quickly and very often above ask. And the valuation of homes is escalating quickly. The commercial industrial property, especially in the city of Bloomington, which is heavily inclusive of hotel properties and retail properties, the two segments that were among the hardest hit during the pandemic had seen their property valuations level or even decline because of how the market valuation process works. And so the, the combination of the really high increases in single-family residential valuations and the stagnation of commercial industrial valuations has resulted in a shift of, of the property tax impact. Now, the 2.75% is lower than everybody else because we're still seeing some benefit of the, of the market value adjustment. But it's also trying to be very cautious coming out of the pandemic. The council will recall that last year, when we adopted our budget, adopted a tax levy that was 2.75% for 2021, we were forecasting a 0% for 2022 because our expectation in December of last year was that we were going to see the significant shift in valuation and that we were going to try to hold the line on operations going into 2022. And we have continued to do both of those. Kari will get into some of the factors that have resulted in a 2.75% increase. And, and there are only a couple of them, really, because we have, for the most part, held the line on the rest of our operations. But I think the difference here, Councilmember Lowman, coming back to your original question, is the difference in the tax base composition, the presence of the commercial industrialized sector and its relative stagnation compared to residential values. And then finally, that we are holding our line on operations. You know, and I can't speak to what these other cities are doing or, you know, what is, you know, what's driving their levy increases. But I know for our, our purposes, that we're trying intentionally to make sure that we're not driving up the levy this year. Was that, was that sufficient to answer the question, councilmember?
Well, I know I gave you a little bit of a head start. I asked you a little bit earlier. And it is a very complex thing to, and I think you did a great job. It's not a succinct thing to go forward. But I think, because I know that some folks, when they saw their notices that came out, you know, and they see this, it doesn't kind of comport to what, what they believe, you know, is happening to them. And I think you did a nice job of explaining that, that with that shift and how, you know, we benefit over multiple years. And what I would say to residents, and I don't, I don't know if other folks would see it this way, but we have to kind of, I think, sometimes when we look at this as a single year is kind of deceptive. We got to look at this over the long term. And that's, you know, really the way, as a council, we should be. And I think we do, I look at this on the long term. And I, you know, I'll just say, this manager, I really did like it when you kind of changed these numbers over to being actual numbers rather than percentages, because I think folks have a little easier time of grasping what those, those value numbers are and how that impacts them. It's a little more difficult to do it when you're trying to compare other cities. So this is the right. It's a little more difficult to, to do it when you're trying to compare other cities, so this is the right way to do that. But I think that would be helpful for residents to see that. But thank you for trying to take a complicated, complicated topic and bring it forward.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor and Councilmember Loman, thank you for that, Councilmember. And you're right, it is complex and I probably could have gone on at further length, but then I feel like I would have taken most of our budget managers' thunder. So I think, Kari, if you, unless you have anything else to add, I think, go ahead and keep on rolling.
Well, actually, we, we have a question. Councilmember Coulter with the question. Councilmember Coulter.
Thank you, Mayor. And this is actually hitting very much on a, on a similar topic, but I think to sort of sum up, correct me, Matt, Mr. Manager, if I'm phrasing this incorrectly, but you know, when we think about sort of the overall share of, of the property tax, for lack of a better term, burden within the city of Bloomington. We, because of our sort of relatively unique composition, in any sort of given year, in the average year, commercial industrial properties pay a larger portion of that overall property tax levy than they do in most other cities. So the, the short answer is that in, in most years, that's a really good thing for residents because businesses cover a larger share of that. But because of the unique circumstances we're in right now, both, as you said, with the, the residential market continuing to be as hot as it is and business properties suffering due to the pandemic, it just creates this sort of unique environment where we're seeing this really substantial shift. Am I, am I phrasing that correctly?
Yes, you are, Councilmember. I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor and Councilmembers, Councilmember Coulter, yes, you are phrasing that correctly. You know, we, we often have a, a chart that shows the changes in valuations for both the single family residential and the commercial industrial sector side by side in terms of their relative strength or weakness. And that, that allows us to show a little bit of, of how the different valuation changes are affecting property taxes. So this is a good picture that Kari is showing right now, that, that you see CNI going down, residential value going up. So, you know, that chart that we would show would say strong residential value, weak commercial industrial value. And when that is happening, there's a shift so that, you know, the C, the commercial industrial properties are just paying a lesser share. That is not to say that it is an unsubstantial share that they're, they're paying because commercial industrial still represents a significant portion of our property tax revenues overall. And combined with the market, the, with the multifamily residential is still about half of the tax base. So the, the taxes, the, the, the tax burden is still not the, the, the greatest impact is not on the single family homeowner in total.
Thank you.
Council, any additional questions? Seeing none, I think we can move onward.
Okay. So these are the proposed changes to that preliminary 22 tax levy. And overall, it is not a change to the dollar amount, but it's a shift between the different categories that we have for the tax levy. So we have, there is a, for the debt service piece, that is a reduction of $167,122. And that is because the, the cost for the debt service was lower than originally anticipated. We received excellent interest rates and premiums with our latest bond issuance. So that's a benefit of our three AAA bond ratings. And then I'll get into some details in a minute here, but for the general fund, where we did reduce that amount in the general fund. And then we have the, the difference of those, those two reductions are $600,000. We have that going to strategic priorities. And you'll see why, why that is, some of the things that we originally had in the general fund, we moved to strategic priorities. So this next slide is the, just the revenues. So these are the revenues of the general fund. Not all of it is property tax, the majority of it is property tax. But these are the, the other categories that bring in revenues that fund general fund services. And for lodging tax, we have lowered that forecast for lodging tax revenue for next year. That's mainly based on most updated industry information that we have, particularly the Smith travel report. Just to be more in line with what they are forecasting for Bloomington and our area. So we did bring that down a little bit. But we did increase permit revenue. So that has increased by $695,000 from where we had it for the preliminary. And $395,000 of that increase is based on increased projects in the pipeline and our activity at Mall of America. And then $300,000 of that increase is for, we've added some additional expenses in a program for the time of sale inspections, doing that at the city of Bloomington. And so you'll see on the next slide, there is a related expense for that with some additional staffing costs. So that additional $300,000 is somewhat offset by staffing costs for that, but not completely offset. But that's the, the change there for those revenues. So this is really the big changes. And then overall for revenues, it doesn't change very much. Those kind of netted together is a, a decrease in the property tax levy. So it's just slightly more about $7,544. So the next slide, these are all of the expenses in the general fund and we, we break it out by, by, by department. And then I'm going to go into much more detail separately into all of these, but just some things to highlight that have changed. Under administration, racial equity and inclusion is in that area. And we had proposed new position in that area and we've moved that to the strategic priorities fund in that model as an option for council. As well as in legal, we had two new positions for compliance, for an attorney position and a paralegal position. And I'll just say too, these positions aren't just the salaries, it would be, you know, fully loaded costs for a, a new employee that have benefits as well. And the compliance issues were identified as potentially for earned sick and safe leave or other initiatives. So we moved that also to strategic priorities instead of in the legal budget. And then we had some updates, an increase in police. We did updated salary and benefit projection that resulted in some additional costs there. And then on that community development line, that's what I was talking about just a little bit ago with, if we have the new time of, time of sale inspection program that would require two new full-time and one part-time employee, that would be the cost. So that would be offset the additional forecasted $300,000 of revenue. So those are the, kind of the, there's also some, you know, movement in other areas, but those are the, the big things that we wanted to highlight. Um, so before I get into, I don't know if you want me to stop here, if there's any just questions overall, before we get into the detailed budget requests?
Council, any questions on those handful of slides before we get into the details? I think we're moving on.
Okay. Okay. So first of all, I'll start with the city council. So when we look at our general fund expenses, the first line item we have there is the city council. It is the smallest line item there, but um, you know, it's the mayor and the six councilmembers that exercise legislative power in the city of Bloomington and determine the city policies. There's also the one full-time employee, which is the administrative assistant to the mayor and city council. And this is how the $524,816 that are in the 2022 budget are just split out. These are the categories. So you're going to see this when we split out all these other general fund budgets. So majority, and this will be the case in most of the budgets, salaries and benefits. So $338,000, materials, supplies, services, 237, internal expenses. So we have the internal service funds, which were approved recently. Those are like IT, IT fund, facilities, things like that. So you have those in, those expenses in there. And then we, there's also, you'll see in these general fund departments, there is a chargeback to the funds that are not inside the general fund so that they have the true cost of what it takes to run that operation. So like charges back to the facilities fund or to the IT fund, for example. So we do have some kind of charges coming in and going out with accounting. Then in total, then we have the total city council budget. And I don't know, would you like me to stop at each department to see if there's questions? Or do you, would you like me to go through the whole general fund?
I, I don't know. Any member of this council is a shrinking violet. I think if they have questions, they'll chime up right away if they have anything in particular. So I think you can keep going and council, it's on you now. If, if you have questions, please don't be shy.
Okay. I'll just kind of pause for a second between them. Okay. So next is administration. So administration, this is the administration department, there's 18 full-time employees. And the divisions within administration include, there's the city manager's office. And those are the three employees that are the city manager's office, also kind of part of the city manager's office, but is the racial equity and inclusion. What, there's just one employee right now. And in human resources, they have six full-time employees. And then in city clerk, there's eight, plus there's a one regular part-time employee, as well as numerous temporary election judges during elections. So on departments that are a little bit bigger or they have multiple divisions, I have taken their budget request and I broke it out two different ways, so you can see it in two different ways. So for administration, the overall budget's 2.9 million. And if you just look at that overall, for so, the majority is salaries and benefits, 2.7 million. You've got materials, supplies, services, internal charges, the overhead and then the total. And then you can also take a look at it by like different divisions within administration. So you can see the city manager's office, 505,000, racial equity and inclusion, 215, HR, 728. City clerk, and that has administration, the records retention, data requests, elections, licensing, that's 1.4 million, almost 1.5 million. And then that all equates to the 2.9 million. In this administration budget, there are some requests for staff. And so the first one is in HR and it's a part-time HR office assistant position. So, and I've got the cost there too, so a little over $36,000, that's fully loaded cost for this position. So this position, it was vacated last year and it ended up being eliminated in the 2021 budget. This is the front desk, if you go into the city manager, HR, mayor's area, this is the desk. When people come in, this is the person that sits there. So they provide invaluable support also to the HR team and greet everyone that comes in to see someone from HR, city manager, mayor's office. So currently, we have been able to fill this vacancy with a temporary seasonal employee. We've had some budget savings in other areas, but the department feels it's crucial to fill this position on just a regular, ongoing basis. The second one in this administration department is reclassification. So of the, the, the current racial equity coordinator position, just to a higher level position. So this is an increased cost of about $10,769. And so the reason for this is this, this position, you know, was new not that long ago. And it's much broader and more outwardly focused than originally described in, in the job description. And does a more outward representation of the city, provides guidance to the mayor and city manager and just greater overall responsibility for the launching of new programs, policies and programs. That's it. So that's administration. Next is legal. And legal has 13 full-time employees and also three regular part-time employees. They did some kind of restructuring recently and had some more, less full-time and more part-time. And 40% of the risk and litigation manager for the city is in this budget of this, of that position's in this budget. The other 60% is in finance, they work in both departments. They have two divisions, civil and criminal. They provide legal counsel to the city council, advisory boards, commissions, city departments. They prosecute non-felony criminal offenses occurring within the city. And this is what the overall legal department budget looks like when you break it up by category. It's overall over $2 million. And at one time, we did have, we tried to have a budget that was split between civil and criminal. And it became very hard because there's a lot of, I think most, a lot of the legal staff doesn't only work in criminal or only work in civil and there was a lot of journal entries going back and forth that was making budgeting a lot more complex than it had to be. So we do, we do just have one budget for, for legal now. But overall, the, the biggest cost is the salaries. There's the materials, supplies and services there, internal charges, and then the charges out to non-general fund funds. Next is finance. So finance has 24 full-time employees and of course provides financial services for the city, but also port authority, HRA. It, we have monthly and annual financial reports that are provided, safeguards to city's assets, provides internal controls, very important to prevent fraud. We do have the highest possible bond ratings, the triple, AAA from Standard and Poor's, Moody's and Fitch. And we have budget, debt service, investments, accounting, cashiering, accounts payable, utility billing, accounts receivable, payroll, purchasing audit and risk management. And in that bottom picture there, that is the finance department dressed up like a monopoly board. With, we have the cards there. So that was from a while ago, before COVID. Okay. So for the finance department, it's overall 1.5 million. And on the left is the breakout between salaries and benefits, material supplies and services, internal and then overhead costs. And then by division, it's kind of three overall divisions. So there's the finance admin and budget is one division, that's 1.2 million. Finance operations includes a lot that has the on accounting, auditing, purchasing, payroll, cashiering, accounts payable and general billing and accounts receivable. It also includes utility billing. However, 100% of that is charged back to the four utility funds. So you can see we have, that would be part of that overhead expenses charged to the other, other funds. And then also for, I have risk management and litigation that is shown here. And as I said before, 40% of that is a legal budget. And then the remaining 60% is charged back to the internal services fund for self-insurance. So as far as in the finance budget, it does not have an impact. There are three finance staffing changes included in the 2022 budget request. And I'm going to go into the detail of all of these. So there's an accountant, the grants coordinator, an accounting assistant with a focus on purchasing and payroll, and then a utility billing office assistant. And this would be charged back 100% to the utility funds, mainly solid waste. And it has, it would have to do with the organics recycling, the new program that's coming. So first of all, the accountant with a focus on grants, a grants coordinator accountant. Just to give you some information about the grants that we have at the city. So at the end of last year, there were 68 federal, state and local grants totaling over $25 million. Those of federal funds such as American Rescue Plan funds and FEMA, they have very strict requirements, require a large amount of documentation and adherence to federal uniform guidance policy. This position would serve as a liaison with all departments to coordinate grant administration during the full grant lifecycle from application to closeout and would maintain the administration of various grant portals. and would maintain the administration of various grant portals that are required. And there is a potential in the future for this position to be sort of supported by grant funds and give the city the capacity to obtain additional grant funds. Uh, we don't have any of that additional, um, revenue reflected in this budget request. Just to, especially just starting out and just to be conservative, since we don't know what that would be. Second one, an accounting assistant that would help with purchasing and payroll. There are currently only two purchasing employees in the finance department that oversee procurement. Um, and then also just one full-time person that does payroll for the entire city, just one person. They do have somehow, and, um, some people that back up for the main part, it is one person that does that. And, um, there's a large number of capital projects, um, such as, and one's coming as well. Since, such as the new fire stations that have numerous separate purchase bids and pieces to them. And purchasing is requiring a lot of assistance, uh, with different, um, things, just things like vendor setup and contract entry, entry and bid bond returns. And I won't read through this whole list. Um, but it's just keeping up with all that, um, it's starting to be hard to keep things from getting backlog. And then, as I said before, with just one full-time employee dedicated to payroll, there's a need for some more assistance, just how it is right now with the payroll process and inquiries and follow-up. But in addition, if we're looking at, um, there could be a time where the fire department may need to make some significant changes. And that would, uh, transition a processing fire payroll to, um, to finance. It's currently done in the fire department. And that is around a hundred and five right now paid-on call firefighters that we would be adding. And then you did, utility, a billing office assistant. This would be a position that's being added for, um, billing customer service with the new organics recycling program. And, um, like I said, this would charge back a hundred percent to utility funds, so it would not be property tax.
And Cory, quick question, if you don't mind.
Yes.
I, so with the grants coordinator position, just real ballpark, do we have an idea kind of the average life cycle of those rescue plan grants or FEMA grants that we have? Just kind of when we're going to work through some of those? Uh, I'm just trying to picture when this grants coordinator can start doing kind of the more proactive solicitation?
Um, yes, mayor, uh, council members, council member Martin. So for the American Rescue Plan Funds, that goes until twenty twenty-four, I think, twenty twenty-five. Um, so that is ways off. That's the one that I know the best as far as their timeline. Um, that's, you know, really big dollars. Um.
That's, yeah, that's, I, I know, especially some of my colleagues in council have mentioned before, things like, um, corporate sponsorships, which are pretty similar in structure, and some of our larger parks projects coming up. So just the timing on when those will be popping up. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor and council members, council member Martin, I might chime in that I think that we would, uh, very quickly task them with proactive solicitation work. We're just not in here setting the expectation for how much return we're going to have on that in the first, uh, year or two, as, as you're aware. Um, pursuing these grants often takes a fair amount of lead time. And so, uh, I think there is a, there is a, a reasonable policy discussion for the council to be had on what that expectation is for, um, the return on investment of having somebody who is specifically seeking grants. Um, you know, is it a three to one on an annual basis for the, you know, the cost of the position? Yeah, we, we do have the, the monitoring and the compliance aspects of the, of, of the grant administration, which are going to happen and, and, you know, justifies the need for the position. But, um, to really, to really think about what it is we want that person to be doing, um, you're right, they need to be going out and looking for grant options. We do that, we do that right away.
Thank you.
I see council member Nelson and then council member Baloga. Council member Nelson.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I have a few questions in this area. Um, similar to council member Martin, uh, the grant, it seemed like we're looking at staff to administer grants that came in in the past. And, uh, um, when we first discussed this, it was regarding grants, um, in the future, and this would be self-sustaining based on those grants. And so I'm not, uh, I'm a little frustrated with that person there for, uh, funding a position for previous grants. Can you help me clarify that?
Mr. Verbrugge. Ms. Carlson.
I had, I had a little bit of trouble hearing you, council member Nelson. So what the, can you restate what the clarification was?
Um, the information that I saw indicates that we needed to add this position because of grants that we've already received in the past versus what council member Martin had talked about of additional grant dollars. Can you help understand the difference between those and what the need for this position is?
Sure. Uh, thank, Mr. Mayor, council members, council member Nelson. Thank, you know, the, the question is, you know, when we first started talking about this, we were, we were looking forward and saying that we want somebody who's going to be pursuing grants. And this, as this has evolved, it seems to be focused more on, uh, grants that we have already received. And, um, I'll, I'll give you a couple of examples of where we have run into the last couple of years, having more, uh, uh, grant compliance issues. And, um, frankly, our, our staff had either the, the capacity or the, the, um, knowledge to administer. So we had an audit a couple of years ago, you remember, from the Department of Justice. And the way that we were, uh, managing some of the, uh, the, the justice, uh, dollars was flagged in that, in that review, um, be, just because of the complexity of the regulations. Uh, and yes, the amount of money that we have coming through now over the next four to five years has a significant amount of regulation. I think what has happened here is as we were thinking about how we would take advantage of a grants, um, a grant writer previously, um, we, we recognized that we had grant administration issues within the organization that were existing. And so what we're trying to do here is get the best of both worlds and, and find somebody, um, who's able to do, um, both ends of it. Uh, and, you know, that, it may be that grant writers are not the best grant administrators, but and, and we may be seeking somebody that has a unique set of skills here, but we're not going to know that, I think, until we go out. Cory, did you have anything more that you wanted to add there?
I'll, I'll just say that a lot of different people across the city are involved in grants. And it would, and everyone's kind of working on their own to some extent, and it would be good to have one person that is coordinating everything and giving people direction and making sure people are up to date on the current guidance, so that we're not missing things and we're not, you know, following some of the regulations. And also making, um, departments aware of what is out there. So there's still going to be a, um, a need for departments to be involved as well. But, um, I think there's definitely a need for someone in, you know, as an account, an accounting role, um, that can provide this, um, expertise. And then just another thing that I forgot to mention before is, um, the safer grant that we did not receive that we applied for, you know, will apply for that again, that was going to help with the, the fire department, um, in staffing. Um, if we were to receive that, that would go about three years.
Okay, um, second question that I have is, um, we're looking at a purchasing person because of future fire stations. But we just recently built a fire station. Can you try to help me understand why we need a new purchasing person when we were able to in the past build a fire station, uh, with our current staffing model?
So, uh, mayor, council members, council member Nelson, I can, we can get some more detailed information on that. But I think the process that they're going to be using for purchasing, they're going to be splitting things out, um, to kind of get the best price. And the, um, the best, um, way of doing, uh, procurement is there's going to be, instead of just one project for a fire station, it's going to be multiple, um, separately, many different vendors and separate, um, bids that are going to be going out. Um, so just that one project could be fifty projects. It's kind of what they're looking at coming for these, um, new fire stations. And I think, and just, um, the amount of volume that they have right now, even without that, um, they could definitely use some help so that they could get things pushed through faster.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor and council members, council member Nelson, I think it's a, uh, it's twofold issue. One is that, you know, the fire station was used as an example of large projects that take up a significant amount of time, uh, for a, a single purchasing agent. And yes, we did just, uh, uh, complete a fire station project, and that was over the course of about four years. We're looking at doing four new fire stations over the course of the next seven or eight years, um, which is going to intensify the work. But even more importantly is that if you look ahead to what's in our C I P, uh, for the next several years, we have a significant increase in capital projects. Um, that's going to, I think, really stretch the ability of our, our two existing purchasing staff to do that work.
Just a follow-up question. Is it possible to include that in the project cost as a management fee or something like that? And to, for lack of a better term, subcontract that, based on those project specifics as opposed to making this a staff person run on in a
Uh, Mr. Mayor and council members, we can look at that. We're, we're considering doing something similar, uh, for a construction manager approach, given the number of, uh, uh, capital projects that we have. We have not had an internal discussion about whether we would do something similar for a purchasing agent. Uh, I'm not aware of a model that's out there to do that, uh, but we can certainly investigate it more.
Um, next question, uh, was related to the payroll individual, and my understanding is that we have reduced the number of city employees, um, and, and so I'm a little confused as to why we need to add a payroll person. Can you explain to me why we need additional payroll help, uh, with fewer employees, or am I misunderstanding?
Well, uh, Mr. Mayor and council members, council member Nelson, I would say that the, the reduction of, uh, twenty-three F T E last year out of a staff of about, um, seven hundred, uh, well, I'm sorry, about six, with the part-timers, it was about, um, six twenty-five before those reductions. Um, it, you know, there, there's actually over a thousand or eleven hundred, uh, W twos that are issued every year. So it's not just the, uh, it's not just the, uh, regular full-time and regular part-time employees. And we're also looking at shifting the payroll responsibility for the fire department over to the city side currently. Uh, the, the paid-on-call firefighters payroll is managed, uh, from the fire administration. And changes to our payroll system and anticipated changes to the staffing model with fire, it's likely that we're going to bring a hundred more people into our regular, um, payroll cycle than what we have currently.
Thank you for that clarification. Um, will the shift of the fire department into the city payroll allow us to, uh, put more funding into the fire department? I think that's a department we all know that could use some additional funding based on changes they need. Will that essentially free up budget for them?
Um, that, you know, Mr. Mayor and council members, council member Nelson, that might be a, a question that the fire chief is better, uh, able to answer in terms of how he allocates the time for the clerical support staff within fire administration. Um, eh, what we're, you know, what we're talking about is the, the capacity for, uh, staff who typically process that payroll, uh, to take responsibility. Um, so I tell you what, we can, uh, I think the chief is on the meeting tonight. We can either see if he wants to take a swing at that right now, or, uh, we can come back with that answer. He's been promoted. So Chief Seal, can you answer that question?
I can. Hang on one second. I'll get my camera going here. So we have got, um, one full-time office staff, two part-time office staff to equal one full-time. Um, currently, one of the part-time office staff are taking care of payroll as part of her duties. She also takes care of, uh, requisitions, um, purchase orders and verified claims. So, um, reducing our payroll duties here in our administrative office would not appreciably free up, um, you know, that one half-time person's, um, duties enough to have any significant impact, um, on the fire department budget. Um, in fact, um, it would probably just shift some of the work that the other, um, full-time and other half-time, um, person are trying to keep up with, uh, over to this other half-time person to try to assist them in keeping up with their duties. So no appreciable change. Right now I've got those people, uh, stretched pretty thin, uh, keeping up with everything else we're doing.
Uh, thank you, Chief Seal, and appreciate you, uh, running a tight ship there. Um, my last question was regarding organic. There was a, um, indication of some expenses there. Is that covered by the organic fee?
Yes, uh, mayor, council members, council member Nelson, that is in, that is included. Um, it's, it was in the budgets that were approved for the utility funds.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to make sure that wasn't above and beyond that. So, thank you, Cory.
Anything further, council member? All right, council member Baloga, and then I see council member Loman. Council member Baloga.
Uh, thank you. Uh, so since, uh, uh, council member Nelson asked the majority of my questions, what I, uh, just want to clarify is, is two points. One is that, uh, uh, give or take a little bit, uh, in the fire department, we're currently doing payroll for about a quarter of a F T E. And if we move it into the city, we're going to require one additional full-time person? Is that the math that, uh, was just described to me?
Um, Mr. Mayor and council members, council member Baloga, uh, that's the math that the, uh, fire chief just described. You know, there's, um, there's another issue in just the fact that we have one person currently doing payroll for the whole organization. And we just don't have a lot of bench there. Uh, we don't have a lot of flexibility. So the, um, there is, uh, like I said, with, um, with the changes between the fire department, but also just existing need, um, that, uh, we, we just need that excess capacity in the department.
And, and I'll also add that it was like fifty percent of this position would be for payroll, but the other fifty percent would be for purchasing assistance.
So, uh, said differently, then we're asking really for one and a half people for purchasing? Is, is that what was just said?
Well, the requests we have for this one position is just a, a, like half of a person for purchasing and half of a person for payroll, same person. But their job duties would be split fifty percent between these two areas.
Okay, got that, got it. Uh, then going back to the accountant for the grants coordinator position, we indicate that in twenty twenty, the city received, uh, twenty-five million dollars over sixty-eight, uh, grants. What is the activity for twenty twenty-one to date?
Uh, mayor, council members, council member Baloga, I don't have that information right now, but I, we can get that and get that information to you.
Uh, is it fair to say that it's, uh, uh, static or a decline from twenty twenty?
I, my guess would be that it's the same or more, especially with our American Rescue Plan Funds, but I will, I will look into that and find out for sure.
Okay, cause, uh, uh, I have some severe reservations to believe and, and the manager, uh, uh, acknowledged that it's a unique, uh, uh, person who is also a, an accountant and a grant writer. I mean, I, I've, uh, not seen one of those in my experience, but, uh, I mean, I, I've uh not seen one of those in my experience, but uh, you know, it it uh it's, it's sort of a stretch of my imagination because both skill sets are uniquely different. That's all the questions I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Beloga. Councilmember Loman.
Uh, thank you, Mayor and and Manager. This is more of a question for you. I wanted to kind of just take a step back from the uh the the details a little bit uh that you've kind of have presented here. And I wanted to ask you kind of more of a more general question to kind of have a better understanding of your uh, you know, kind of your philosophy when we're looking at um managing uh city council's priorities. Um, and how, you know, when we might look at maybe some of the other organizations that you've had the opportunity to lead, or uh maybe you could all pine on what other peers are uh are doing. And what I'm particularly interested is when we look at staffing, um, you know, there are macro forces and and micro forces that are impacting uh these things, I know, in terms of stability of staff uh and uh and a lack of staffing out there uh in the environment. And I wanted to just know in terms of how some of these things are being presented to us or to the public, uh, if you could give us a little more of some of your 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 thoughts around that. Now, hopefully that isn't too general or or not specific enough to to get you, because I'm just trying to get a better understanding of, you know, you know, are we as efficient when we look at at your peers or other organizations that you've been at? Wh- where are you trying to move the ship? So.
Um, Mr. Mayor and council members, Councilmember Loman, I'm gonna, I'm gonna rephrase your question, Councilmember Loman, uh, a little bit for what I think you're asking. Um, I I and I don't want to compare uh the city of Bloomington to other cities because, like I've said before, each city is unique in how it conducts its business and and what its um, what its service needs are. Uh, I I would say that we have um, we have taken on a a pretty ambitious work plan here over the last several years. And uh, we have largely tried to do that with the with the existing resources that we have. Um, and what we're not doing within this proposed budget, again, uh, harkening back to the question that Councilmember Nelson asked, is is asking just to bring back all of those positions that we had before. Um, which what we're doing is adding where we see real need within the organization based on um the amount of work that we have and where we think the capacity exists within staff to uh to get that work done. So I I think that the the answer to the question that I think you're asking, Councilmember Loman, is that we have been uh, we have been taking on um more work and uh are are frankly trying to execute um on an awful lot of uh desired outcomes and that we've been relatively judicious in terms of the uh addition of staff to make that happen. And uh, what, when we make these kind of requests, it's because we've gotten to the point where um typically we're saying that uh our experience over a couple of years is that we don't have the capacity to continue doing the work. Um, the the upcoming positions that Kari will talk about, I know the council's familiar uh with the, especially the uh, like the compliance uh positions in legal. Um, those surface largely because of the uh of one uh policy issue that's moving through right now, the earned sick and safe leave consideration. And there are other issues um over the last couple of years where we have recognized a greater need for that. Um, but we're not going to ask for those positions uh necessarily unless we have uh this one policy decision made because we've been, those other things, we've been trying to get along with the compliance. But things like opportunity housing ordinance have created additional uh compliance that we've been trying to do with existing staff. Uh, and you know, the the more that we uh take on new initiatives, just the more capacity we're gonna need. Does that answer the question, Councilmember?
I think we're getting, we're getting closer, and I I like how you kind of rephrased it. So it helps me to kind of understand where there may be some 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 question in terms of what I'm asking. I guess what I'm asking is more of a, from a, from a modeling standpoint, you know, in terms of where you're trying to drive the the staffing pieces there. Um, uh, so uh from a policy perspective, you know, I look at the the budget. We've got prepared and put there. It's more of a, uh, I guess the question I'm asking is more of a subjective question, I might say. Um, and uh, and so if I look at this, you know, five years from now in terms of how we're moving the staffing and changing the staffing, I know there's gonna be inefficiencies, you know, in terms of trying to make those transitions in terms of the priorities that we have. What I'm wanting to know is how do I know what that success looks like? Um, you know, because certainly there's gonna be these these incremental changes that are made, and I don't want to get into those levels of details, but I want to know from a policy perspective, you know, how are we, you know, and again, I I admit that that's a very subjective uh question that I'm asking. And, you know, we can, you know, objectively go, okay, we're paying too much here. And that's why I kind of ask some of the questions in terms of, we've got some external factors, you know, inflation that are are driving some of these these things and, you know, availability of staff. But I just want to know, and that's part of the reason why I said, you know, if we look at other institutions, and certainly all those institutions are different, but um, you know, some might argue and say, well, gosh, we got a lot of staff here in Bloomington. Uh, are are we getting the 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 bang for our buck? Uh, so just help me to, I I'm just wanting to understand, you know, what we are trying to do from our prior day. I know we've got a large agenda out there. Um, you know, Mayor, help me if I'm kind of going off the tracks here to kind of, uh, because I I I'm just trying to understand, as I'm looking at this budget uh um in terms of what's happening, you know, certainly we're adding F T Es and those types of things, but are all of these items necessary to being able to accomplish the goals that we're trying to accomplish? And is this the most efficient uh uh proposal that that we're gonna see out there? Why? Why not? Uh, help me understand that. What what does this, what does this mean? What what should, how should the public look at this? Um, so uh, maybe that didn't help you at all, but I'm gonna throw it at you anyway.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor and Councilmember, Councilmember Loman, um, it did help a little bit. I think, you know, one of the, one of the challenges is that the work that uh we do is not always work that can be measured in ways that maybe um people who are trying to understand how government operates can see it. You know, we don't have a sales force that has um specific uh uh, you know, uh, objectives that they're trying to achieve from a revenue perspective. When yours is, ours is about um, you know, service delivery, making sure that the the things that each of the departments are tasked with doing are getting done. And then the support of those um service delivery employees, which is often, I think, the hard harder part of what you're asking, Councilmember Loman, is um, how do you, you you know, how do you justify or how do you uh document the um, you know, the time spent for employees in that support role that don't necessarily have a a deliverable other than a process deliverable? Uh, and I'd say this is, this is part of the work that we do behind the scenes is to continue to monitor the the time spent for employees in various responsibilities and making these requests after analysis of, you know, what the hours are that it takes to accomplish certain tasks. And so when when we're asking for a position like this, it's based on that time spent analysis. It doesn't necessarily correlate easily to a a sales goal or a um, you know, a specific um outcome that is measurable in terms of it gets done at this point, and then you move on to something else. Because so much of what we do is repetitive and continuous.
You know, and I and I appreciate that. And and one of the things, I got an email uh from a resident. I think I forwarded it on to you. Uh, we had questions around uh uh policing uh in the uh, in the city of uh Bloomington, you know, with uh with uh the changes in terms of uh the the crime rate uh that that's happening in Bloomington. You know, and I look at this, I've got a, you know, you know, roughly thirty-six uh percent of our monthly uh budget coming in is is spent on on, you know, generally uh policing. And so, you know, you know, do we increase that? Do we decrease that? You know, what what looks like a successful uh operation or service delivery for uh for the resident? You know, is it in how much money we spend on that, or is it more efficient? And that's sort of what I'm trying to get at, you know, you know, other. And I and I, again, I'm not looking for any answer today, but I think that as we um um, you know, just, that's what I struggle with when I look at some of these numbers. And I I want to be careful about trying to dig into some of the these staffing decisions that you're making without completely understanding, you know, where this thing is going from a long-term uh perspective, uh, because there must be a reason uh why you're doing it. Um, and so that's more or less what I'm trying to understand uh uh what you're putting forward. So hopefully that makes it a better understanding in terms of what I'm trying to, trying to get at.
Also, anything additional? Mr. Verbrugge or Ms. Carlson, anything to add on that? Nope, all right. Let us move on then.
Police Department. So Bloomington Police Department has one hundred and twenty-three sworn officers. There are also, within the budget, thirty-three full-time civilian positions. So that includes uh fourteen of those civilian positions are in dispatch. And then uh, there's one regular part-time employee. Um, that's also in civilian in the property control room. Um, also, there are two Hennepin County liaisons. Um, they're not City of Bloomington employees, they're Hennepin County, but they um, there's uh one that they they're embedded in the police department. There's one that's a multicultural uh community worker and then also a social worker. And um, they uh respond to crimes, medical emergencies, traffic, traffic accidents, public safety hazards, domestic disputes, and other community needs. Um, just some things to highlight, community engagement is a key focus of the Bloomington Police Department. There's emphasis on adequate training, also a focus on officer wellness and mental health. And then um, and then the pathways to policing program to look at um recruiting uh non-traditional candidates to the, to the police force. Um, the police portion of the general fund budget is uh the largest um portion of general fund budget. It's twenty-eight point seven million. A majority of that is in salaries and benefits, that's almost twenty-three million dollars. And then one point three million about material supplies and services. Um, also, a lot of internal charges, when you look at all the fleet charges for police vehicles, for example, um I T. Also, there are public safety technology and equipment charges. Um, there's some overhead that's charged out to other funds. And then um, if you break it out between the divisions, there's three high-level divisions. So there's Police Administration, Emergency Management at one point two million. The bulk of it is in police operations, um, about twenty-one point five million. And then Police Support, um, six million. Um, so since the police operations is so large at that twenty-one point five million, I did add additional breakout for you to of what is in that. Um, so that twenty-one million point five here in police operations, here it is split out by all of the different um activities. So um, I won't read through all of these, but you can just see um how that amount is split out in the different activities that are within police operations. Let's leave this here for a second.
Councilmember Nelson, question?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. A uh quick question. Um, how are we doing in dispatch? I know we've talked about that in the past. We've had uh staffing issues. Is it fourteen based on our current or is it based on our desired levels? Um, because uh, you know, Kudos are there for insane hours and it's done a good job. So I'm trying to get my head around what this budget includes.
Yes, um, Mayor, council members, council member Nelson, um, so the 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 dispatch budget would would be within the six million dollars with the police support budget. And I don't know, um, City Manager, if you, if you know if the, if there are any vacancies currently in dispatch.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember, Councilmember Nelson, that uh we continue to be, I think, about three or four dispatchers short. I see Chief Hartley has approached the podium there and can provide a more real-time update.
Good evening, Chief Hartley. Thanks for being here this evening.
Um, you are exactly right. We have been challenged over the last several years trying to fully staff the dispatch center. Um, I believe we still are about four positions down. And uh, the real challenge is, it's a um, a complex job to uh to learn and 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 obviously master, takes several years, if not longer. And um, you know, the hours are are grinding, and it's not a good fit for a lot of people. So we have um, we've had no problem hiring people, but unfortunately, when they get their foot in the door, they find that uh it's just not for them, and they decide to um go on to other endeavors. So uh, we have a a open process. We've worked uh hand-in-hand with Human Resources to uh provide uh good quality candidates, but it's really, really challenging, and we're not alone throughout the metro to fill um our Public Safety Dispatch Center.
Uh, thank you for that information, Chief. Um, one of the questions I would have is, and I know it doesn't like come down to conversation, but do we need to look at that in terms of what pay people for that position? It's a stressful, difficult uh position. And um, as an individual who has called into our dispatch center and did uh personally and had extremely professional help when I needed it, um, they do, they do. But this is one of the things that I really think we should look at. If we can the right amount to get the right people, if we're struggling to get people, um, what do we need to do to get them in there? So you don't have to answer that right now. This is a priority to make sure we're filling those positions.
And I I appreciate your question, Councilmember, and I think I, you know, I don't want to put you on the spot, Chief Hartley, but I I will ask, uh, not just here in Bloomington, but elsewhere, is this a pay issue with police dispatchers? Or is it a matter of the type of job that it is, and it's a matter of trying to reconfigure these jobs so the hours aren't grinding, so they aren't so incredibly stressful and and the burnout rate so high?
Yeah, I uh, members of council, uh, Mayor Bussie, uh, that's a great question. Uh, we are not alone in this challenge. I don't think it's a matter of pay, although I think that I got fourteen or potential fourteen employees that would maybe argue that. But um, it is just a complex job to learn. It's one that um requires heavy multitasking. Um, some centers will have two-stage, which um you start off, and we've considered this. This is a proposal where you would have certain employees answering phones and certain employees actually doing the dispatch. It would allow some of the uh dispatchers a maybe more of a slow learning approach to the job overall. Uh, it's something that uh we've talked about. But again, the real challenge is with a with a um communication center such as ours, we can only train so many people at one time. And so when we lose somebody, it's really, really tough. And as we try to get up closer to full strength, it's putting a strain on those that are having to work long hours. They've been really, they've been troopers. I mean, I cannot say enough about our dispatchers and the amount of hours and dedication they have given to this city. And it's great to hear that when Councilmember Nelson called in, he received professional, uh, because I think if you looked at the hours they're having to work to cover the shifts, um, you know, something's gotta give, but we are trying. Uh, we just had another uh potential employee back out after kind of thinking through the hours. Um, and so to answer your question, it is one that's been challenging other P S A Ts throughout the Twin Cities, really throughout the country.
Thank you for that. Council, additional questions on this in particular? Don't see any? Thanks, Chief Hartley.
Thank you.
Kari, please, go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you. And I forgot, I did have a slide that broke out, please support here, so.
There it is.
Um, the dispatch is at the top there. That's the biggest part of it, of the support budget. Um, so then, in the police budget request, there are uh two staffing quest changes. Um, first one is, as I said um at the beginning, that there is a one regular part-time employee in the police support division, and that's a a property control specialist. So there's currently one full-time and one part-time employee. And this uh request would be to um, to move that part-time uh position to a full-time position. Um, and and the reason for this is that just to help manage, there's been an increasing volume and complexity of the uh property evidence operation. Um, I think in the statistic here I have, in twenty seventeen, there was a little over ten thousand items. I think in the statistic here I have, in 2017, there was a little over ten thousand items that were taken in, and an average of twenty-nine per day, and then a total of thirty-four thousand at the end of the year. And then last year, in 2020, there was fourteen thousand five hundred and sixty items taken in, an average of forty per day, and the total at the end of the year, fifty-seven thousand at year-end. So just a twenty-seven percent increase in three years. So the cost of this is there at forty-nine thousand. And then the other request is, is just a reclassification. It's already a full-time position, but it would be moving a police records position to a supervisor position, just to provide some needed consistent, just hands-on supervision of the records unit personnel. So a reclass and then a move from a part-time to a full-time.
Council, any questions on this one? All right, seeing none.
All right, Fire Department. So the Bloomington Fire Department is, as you know, they under, they operate under a mainly paid-on-call model. So the majority of the department are not full-time employees. There's about a hundred and five paid-on-call firefighters, and they live within approximately four minutes or less from one of the city's six fire stations. And the Fire Department, they currently only, currently only have eight full-time employees who are firefighters. But in next year, they'll have an additional three full-time battalion chiefs. And that will be funded by the Federal American Rescue Plan Funds for the next three years. And then last year, in 2020, there were three thousand one hundred and ninety-five calls for service with Fire Department. And the nine-one-one call to arrival time for a first unit was, on average, nine minutes and thirty-nine seconds, ninety percent of the time, which is short of their goal of arriving within seven minutes and thirty seconds, ninety percent of the time. This is the Fire Department budget. It's six point seven million. At the, so I have the salaries and benefits, this would be the, you know, full-time, the City of Bloomington employees. And then we've got the paid-on-call fire personnel costs there, which is a separate. And then materials, supplies, and services. They, those internal charges are going to include all the IT and so these charge for Fire Departments. Also, the public safety technology and equipment charges. And so that are charges that they have annually that eventually fund things like large ladder trucks and things like that. Also, but a little bit of capital. And then the divisions there are broken out between Administration, Inspection and Prevention, Building Equipment, firefighting and training. There is a charge from police for dispatch, because Fire also uses the dispatch center out of police, so they've got a charge there. It's included in their internal charges. And then Fire Emergency Management. So the staffing changes that are in the, the Fire Department budget, this is the big one that we've talked about before, kind of the big change and need for some changes in Fire, is the one point one million dollars that have been added for those, an increase for duty crew hours, so that there's some set hours and also for pay for those duty crews, just to be able to cover the needs that they have. And then also those three new battalion fire chiefs, that's not going to be increased to property taxes, at least not until 2025. But those costs are going to be funded by American Rescue Plan Funds. That's the Fire Department. We've talked a lot about them before.
I don't see any handouts. Councilmember Beloga, councilmember Beloga.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So the three new battalion chiefs, that four hundred thousand dollars, is that four hundred thousand per year is what I'm assuming? Is that correct?
Yes, Mayor, councilmembers, councilmember Beloga, that is correct. That's about four hundred thousand dollars a year. So we're using one point two million dollars of the American Rescue Plan Funds for, for those three battalion chiefs for three years.
Great. And I know we have talked about this, but I'm still a little bit uncertain of why we're bringing those on, all in one year and all at the front end, rather than spacing it out into the future. So possibly Chief Seal could respond to that?
We'll get Chief Seal back on here in just a moment.
Mr. Mayor, councilmember Beloga. The need for the three currently include some of the reasons that we needed additional career firefighters that we tried for in a safer grant that we were not successful in getting, and spreading out some of the response duties that are currently shared by just four of us. In addition to that, we will be doing some additional twenty-four-hour duty crews, starting in March, once we tear down Fire Station Four. So we make sure that we have coverage for Station Four's area. We've been unable to successfully find a place to house a fire truck and a crew while Station Four is being torn down and rebuilt. So our solution for that is to increase duty crews at Station Six and Station One for the full day to make sure that we get rigs out quickly to respond into Station Four's area for the rest of the time. In addition, we've been struggling with staffing trucks outside of duty crew hours currently, and in many cases, rolling trucks with one person or two people. And that's why those chiefs are filling in on those crews. So the three people, when we looked at the runs and the workload, the three people are kind of a Band-Aid in the interim until we can add some more firefighters.
So do, do three battalion chiefs equal six full-time firefighters, for instance?
No. Three battalion chiefs equal three battalion chiefs.
What, what would the cost equal in full-time firefighters?
I would say they would probably equal maybe five or four.
Yeah, I'm, I'm having a hard time understanding the cost-value ratio in, in hiring battalion chiefs to staff fire trucks instead of looking for more.
We're, 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 excuse me, I'm sorry, continue.
No, I'm, I'm pretty well done. It's just a value ratio of using a battalion chief to staff a firefighter position. You know, I'm just struggling with that, so if you can clarify.
Sure, councilmember Beloga, Mayor, Mayor Bussie, councilmembers, we're not hiring battalion chiefs to staff fire trucks. We have several, several needs that those battalion chiefs are going to be filling in. That one of their ancillary duties is to make sure that our crews are responding and being safe. The fill-in, because we're understaffed with firefighters, is a set of duties right now that the four chiefs that exist right now have been trying to fill, as well as keeping our crews safe, as well as conducting training, and as well as trying to supervise six stations and a hundred and five personnel. So the battalion chiefs are part of a greater plan, longer term, as, in addition to providing for, you know, upcoming changes in our staffing model and increasing our staffing hours, the battalion chiefs, in addition, are really, you know, I guess what I would say quite clearly is, is that we used to have eight, eight chiefs. I've got four right now. I'm trying for three more to help us run the, run a twenty-four-seven operation with a hundred and five paid-on-call firefighters, eight career firefighters, with an idea that we have to increase the number of hours that we have to do duty crews in. Long answer to a shorter question, and I apologize, it's a little confusing.
And, and part of it, which I didn't say, and I, I apologize for neglecting to add that, is that when, and, and Carrie mentioned earlier, the, the grant application for the three-year of additional firefighters, it made sense that you needed three battalion chiefs because of the additional number of full-time staff that they would have and need to train and supervise. But you, you put it into perspective now for me in today's model, so thank you for that. And I have no further questions.
Also, anything additional? All right, let's continue.
All right, so Community Development has sixty-two full-time employees, two regular part-time employees currently. And their divisions are assessing, building and inspections, environmental health, and planning. And here is what their budget looks like. On the left, divided into different categories of salaries and benefits, material supply services, internal charges, overhead being charged out. And then the divisions of Administration, Planning, Building and Inspections, Environmental Health, and Assessing. And at ten point one million. And included in this are these positions. So there is a planner position included in planning. And then within Building and Inspections, there are three position, three additional positions requested. So there's a, for the time-of-sale inspection program. So there's Building Inspection Aid, an Office Support Specialist, and then a part-time Building Inspection Aid. So on this slide would be three full-time employees and then one part-time employee. And here's some more additional information about those. So this planning position was in the budget in 2020. It was vacant, and then it was eliminated from the 2021 budget for budget savings. And so the reduced, this reduced level of staffing and planning, combined, there's increased demands for staff time in planning for projects like racial equity action teams and a new demand for assisting other divisions with GIS, data retrieval, map making, the opportunity, housing ordinance. Basically, all these things, just wearing the staff thin and making it hard to deliver work plan items in a timely fashion. So the division, it's surviving by working long hours, which is not sustainable. So there's also, in addition to this, multiple retirements on the horizon, and just the loss of significant experience and the need to train a new staff will stretch the division even further. So that's why they've brought this request back for the planner that was eliminated. And then the, the three time-of-sale positions, so this would be offset by additional revenue of three hundred thousand. So it, additional revenue would more than offset the cost of these three positions. So it would add approximately additional, this time-of-sale program, inspection program, would add approximately an additional eight hundred to a thousand inspections per year. Currently, one and a half inspectors do about five hundred to six hundred per year. So having all the time-of-sale inspections done by the city would need an additional full-time inspector, one part-time inspector, and one office support specialist to help with the new workload.
I see questions from councilmember Nelson, councilmember Martin, and then councilmember Beloga. Councilmember Nelson?
Thank you, Mayor. Apologies about my video connection, but a couple of things here. First, thank you to, that's been working really hard. All right, if you could go back a couple of slides for me? Yeah, there. So the time-of-sale inspection, this is something that can be provided by the private marketplace as well. Can you explain to me the pros and cons of doing this in-house versus just having the private marketplace, which is already doing inspections, provide this?
I, I'm going to see.
Maybe Jamie can do that, sorry.
I was going to see if our Community Development Director, Carla Henderson, would, would want to get on.
And I do see her coming on board here.
Okay.
And there she is. Good evening, welcome.
Good evening. Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, councilmember Nelson. As you know, City Council approved the new time-of-sale energy disclosure. And with that new ordinance, we had a lot of discussion internally as to what that would mean for our inspection staff. So there are a couple of things that are going on. One, we found that this proposal came forth after discussing it with our building official, Bernadette Galipsi, that we wanted to have consistency. Many times when the private inspectors go in and do the time-of-sale, when there is a reinspection, our inspectors go in and will note different items that should have perhaps had a permit pull that needed, need to be fixed before the, the home is sold. The other thing is timeliness. We believe that having this internally, we will have greater control as to when a resident is asking for that inspection, because right now, it is dictated by the private market. The other item I would add is the permits. We believe that there are instances where work is being done inside the home, getting it ready for sale, that requires a permit. And that is obviously something that falls in the purview of the Building and Inspection Division. And then there is the time-of-sale energy disclosure. So right now, Buildings and Inspections uses the City View system. And the private market, the private inspectors do not have access, nor will they be given access to our City View system, which means they would have to bring in or email their time-of-sale energy disclosure forms to our Office Support Specialists, who would have to input that into the system, whereas our inspectors will be able to do it right on the job during the time of the inspection, so there will not be that duplication of effort. So I hope that provides some clarity onto why we are proposing this.
It does provide some clarity. I will say that in the college of the new home construction market, the fact that they're able to provide the energy, the information to houses through a private system, I think this one concerns them to a great deal. So I, I, I think I would prefer to see that, as well as the time of sale, to, to you to have an option for the private marketplace to provide it. In my mind, I think they can do it as long as we set the standard. I totally agree with providing the energy information. I think it's great benefits people looking to purchase a home. And I'd just like to find a more efficient way to provide that.
Councilmember Martin?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of words kind of caught my eye quick. So I saw.
So I saw, uh, the 1.5 inspectors we have now, um, said we're doing about 500 to 600 inspections. And it would make sense that writing another kind of 1.5 for the time of sale to go along with that. This next 1.5 would be doing 800 to 1,000. So is that just a difference in the type of inspection they're doing that's quick? And I, I'm just wondering why we're not hiring to an additional five to 600 a year while we're doing 800 to 1,000 in new capacity.
Well, um, Mr. Mayor, council member, um, council members, council member Martin. Um, I wanted to, um, stress that this, these numbers fluctuate. Um, depending on, you know, the market, how many sales are needed to, uh, be done. We added the half inspector, uh, to be able to do weekends and evenings so that we could have some flexibility. Um, and so that, yeah, they just, they'd fluctuate.
Well, and, and do we kind of have projections on, uh, once things have normalized a little bit, hopefully soon post COVID, uh, if there was an awful lot of, uh, need that couldn't meet or how often we are running into capacity issues and, uh, we're delaying these inspections?
So we can provide, um, five years worth of data, including the last year, um, 18 months. Um, so we can definitely provide that information to you. And the other thing I should add is we are looking at, um, in the future, next year, bringing forth an ordinance, um, that would require some of our commercial, well, require our commercial parking decks to be inspected. So during the downtime, um, if we saw, you know, that during the winter time, if sales were not occurring in the residential market, those inspectors could be, um, inspecting the parking decks. Uh, we, we have a number of parking decks that are aging and, um, have significant, uh, deficiencies that need to be inspected.
Okay, that'd be great. Yeah, and the historical data doesn't need to be super specific, just curious how often we've gotten into a pitch previously. Thank you.
Council member Beloga.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I'd like to direct this one to Carla. Essentially what I heard is, is that, uh, what our plan is, is to take over 100% of time of sale, uh, inspections. Is, is that, uh, what this plan of staffing equates to?
Um, Mr. Mayor, council members, council member Beloga, at this time, yes, that is what we're proposing.
And, but there still is an option for individuals to have a private inspector do the work. Is that correct?
We have talked internally about pulling together a panel of private inspectors, um, through an RFP process that could basically fill in for overload or, um, appeals. Um, you know, to have a, a third party, um, uh, viewpoint.
So have, have we, other than this evening, made these, uh, uh, current, uh, private inspectors aware of the fact that the city is considering doing all inspections within the city for time of sale?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, council members, council member Beloga, um, I know that our building official has had preliminary conversations, uh, but I do not believe that this, an official notice has gone.
And, and that's the official notice, of course, is pending, uh, the final resolution of the budget and ad count and all of that sort of thing. Uh, I guess, uh, speaking personally, a disappointment was is that, uh, I did not hear that we were going to displace any, uh, private parties with city employees during the time of sale discussion. Did I forget that or did I miss it or was it not discussed?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, council members, council member Beloga, I believe this is the first time that this, uh, plan has been provided to, to this body.
And Mr. Mayor and council members, council member Beloga, it was not until after that, uh, ordinance went through, that staff went back and looked at how we were going to administer the, the time of sale inspections that made the recommendation that this was the best, um, that this was the best way to make sure that that gets done in a consistent, um, fashion across the city and with all the inspectors that work on the program. It, it wasn't, to my knowledge, being contemplated before we had the conversation with council about that.
Um, yes, I, I just hate to see, uh, the city taking and displacing, uh, private parties for doing 100% of what can be done in the marketplace. So, uh, just the, uh, comments of one city council member. Thank you. That's all I have to, uh, for this, uh, item.
Council member Nelson.
Mr. Mayor and council members, I would also just, um, uh, observe that we're the only city that I'm aware of for a time of sale, uh, process, inspection process that has a hybrid system like this, where we have city employees and, and also private inspectors that are doing the work. Um, and I, and to, to Carla's point about being able to get timely, uh, scheduling, um, especially in, in the market that it is today, we think that this is just a better customer service approach to this model.
Council member Nelson.
Yeah, uh, thank you, Mayor. Um, just a couple of questions. I, I, uh, tend to agree with the council member Beloga on this. Um, and I, I respect what, uh, city manager has said regarding to it. But I, I think there are other cities that have zero city involvement in this and don't have a time of sale inspection at all. And I think requiring certain things from that but allowing the marketplace to provide those data points and that information makes some sense with those sort of conversation about whether or not we should pull it in-house versus the marketplace. Makes sense. I'm uncomfortable doing it through the budget process of whether or not we do that. Um, the other question I have, um, shifting focus a little bit is with regards to the additional planner. And in fact, you get some additional information on the increase in, uh, activities. And, and maybe I'm misunderstanding, but from the information we had, the additional planner is due to the work plan of the planning commission that was approved by the city council. And so my question is, are we asking too much of them? And should we be scaling that back? I, I think this gets into a larger conversation about when we ask for things in the work plan, should be budgets attached to it, when we ask for things in ordinance, like we just discussed, uh, with regards to time of sale, should we gain budget information, what the implications of that might be? That's what I think makes that full decision. So, uh, in terms of the, the planner, um, if we looked at that work plan, would we need that planner? I guess is my question. There's probably a lot in there and I apologize for having seven items in one question.
Who would like to tackle that one?
Maybe I apologize.
Ms. Anderson?
Maybe I apologize for having no question, just a bunch of comments.
Um, Mr. Mayor and council members, maybe Carla, if you want to, uh, jump in here and talk about the local planners and, and, you know, what's motivating this request? And as, as Kari said, this is not a new request, this is a deferred request, uh, going back, uh, a couple of years. And, and we just haven't seen the planning act be slowed down in that time.
Yes, um, thank you, Mr. Ruggie. Uh, Mr. Mayor, council members, council member Nelson. Um, as, uh, our city manager indicated, it's my understanding that for the last several years, twice, um, this position has been brought forth and then eliminated, particularly last year because of the budget savings. But I will tell you that, um, the workload has not slowed down. Um, recently, the, um, planning commission and the HRA commission met, they had a joint concurrent meeting and threw a lot of things at the, the staff, um, in terms of our single family housing ordinance, um, as well as our double family housing ordinance and, um, adding ADUs and tiny homes and wanting to get creative. And, you know, every time that, you know, some new initiative comes out, that team, um, and they, they're, they're stellar employees. They do great due diligence, um, in addition to some of the items that were listed on, uh, Kari's slide in terms of they've been known to help not only other divisions but other departments. If people need data pulled, um, the census data that recently came out, housing data. Um, they, you know, they put a lot of projects aside to get to, uh, specific asks internally. And, um, the other thing we, I really believe we need to start with some kind of succession planning, uh, because we do have a lot of knowledge that is going to be going out of the, out the door in the next, uh, I know, the next year to three years. And, um, it takes a long time to ramp up, uh, for a planner to come to the city of Bloomington and, um, excel as our staff has, they provide, uh, produce excellent work. And so, um, just wanting to manage all of that, um, I think it's an appropriate ask.
Council member Carter and then council member Beloga again. Council member Carter.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Ms. Henderson. Um, I guess I just wanted to go back really quick to the time of sale inspections. Um, and since this, and, and just chime in a little bit of my opinion there. And since this is a pretty significant change and it's the first time that we've seen it as a council, um, and a big change kind of philosophically, financially, operationally, I would love to, um, before we kind of move forward approving these specific positions, and I know that's not what we're doing tonight, but when we get to that point, um, I would really like to understand the analysis that staff did in terms of the pros and cons, um, in terms of like the impacts on customer service, the impacts on costs, um, any impacts on our relationships with, um, the private sector and, and just have a better understanding of that before we move forward with any decisions, uh, related to those specifically. Um, and then I, and then I would say I'm, I, I do, you know, I've often thought to myself about, um, the workload of the planning staff and just am amazed at the amount of projects that they are, they're working on. And, and they seem to be kind of be involved in everything across the city as they should be. And so, uh, that position really makes a lot of sense to me. And I've, I've personally felt concerned about the, the level of work that planning staff have. Um, and I know this is not my job, but, uh, just the amount of workload that they have, um, based on all of the new, new development and different kinds of projects coming through. Thank you.
Thank you, council member. Council member Beloga.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, again, this is not a question, it's more in the way of a comment. And, and the comment is one that, uh, I've raised many times over. But with respect to time of sale, I think that whenever we look at an ordinance that may have, uh, uh, other impacts within the city, that that should be done at that same time. Uh, Carla mentioned, uh, the joint meeting between HRA and planning and many, uh, uh, items being brought up such as ADUs for an example, so that if ADUs come then to, uh, council in the form of an ordinance, that we should fully understand what the cost of implementing that is. So that it's really, uh, not a budget discussion at the end of the year, but one that's ongoing through all the year. Uh, thanks for the time.
Thank you, council member. And yes, you have brought that up in the past and do appreciate that. Yes, the, the notion of a fiscal note as we move our way through ordinance changes, I think, is, uh, is, is wise direction. I think is one we should seriously consider. Council member Nelson, I see your hand still up. Is it an old hand or a new hand? I'm going to assume it's an old hand then.
Yeah.
Anything additional on this council? Some good feedback there. Thank you for that. Let's move on.
Okay, so next, uh, community service, 39 full time employees and 10, uh, regular part time employees. Uh, majority, um, nursing staff and, um, consists of public health division and community outreach and engagement. Um, communication, the communications division is also a part of community services, but they are not within the general fund. We'll see them in a little bit. They're in their own special revenue fund. Um, as their funding comes predominantly from cable franchise fees. But, um, just for public health, we've, um, been incredibly fortunate during this pandemic for the Bloomington Public Health Division and their local COVID response. Um, and then also Community Outreach Engagement Division's, uh, leader for equity inclusion and using innovative, um, outreach and engagement, uh, techniques and approaches to ensure that community is considered and heard in the development of new programs and services. This is the community services department, um, budget within the general fund. So $7.8 million and 5 million salaries and benefits, 2 million materials, supplies and services, and then about 740,000 for internal charges. And then you're looking at it by division, there's an administrative division and then 6.4 million for public health and a little over a million for community outreach and engagement. And, uh, there's one, uh, services, the staffing change in the 2022 budget request for, um, for community services, that's in public health with a public health specialist. And so a lot of public health work occurs on multi-year cycles such as, um, accreditation, community health assessments, community health improvement plans. So the community health assessment and improvement work is also shared with head up in county, public health and Minneapolis Health Department. However, we're, um, not seeing the impact of the work in our community. So we want to start doing this work on an annual basis with community partners to allow for better data in our community to address health concerns. So for us to do more work, need additional staff member to assist with data collection, project management and coordination and relationship building. And additionally, uh, the requirements for national accreditation continue to expand. And that also is requiring additional staff capacity. So this investment, um, in capacity would allow the public health division to pivot in their existing work and provide better service to the community.
Uh, council member Loman.
So I'm, I'm assuming with, uh, that, um, with, with that addition, that we are going to, uh, be spreading the cost, um, with our partners with that or just making the assumption? Or has that not been decided?
Um, Mayor, council members, council member Loman, um, we do anticipate that this would be offset partially by state grant revenues and additional federal funding.
So then this work will i- is, is primarily targeted towards just Bloomington in terms of the work that we're doing with this and not for Richfield and Edina?
Uh, Mayor, um, council members, council member Loman, I believe it would be for the three, um, cities that pub, that Bloomington Public Health serves. I think it wouldn't just be Bloomington. I think it would also be, um, Richfield and Edina.
So I, I think council member Loman's question then is, uh, do we anticipate a rate increase to our partners in this to Richfield and Bloom, uh, Richfield and Edina to offset the cost of this? At least there.
Mr. Mayor and council members, council member Loman, I'm, I'm not aware of a conversation about, uh, amending the contracts that we have with those two cities specific to this position. Uh, a good amount of the work is going to relate to the accreditation, which is a, which is for our organization. It's not necessarily for those two organizations. Um, they benefit by our accreditation since, you know, we do provide service for them on a contract basis. Uh, this is one of those, um, places where, to council member Beloga's, uh, earlier comment, you know, back when we received the national accreditation, uh, in 2017, it was unclear, you know, what I think at that time, what obligation there would have to be to, uh, maintaining the accreditation going forward. And, and what we're seeing is there is, um, additional work that's necessary to do that. And so I've had conversations with our public health administrator. And so I've had conversations with our public health administrator as our accreditation is coming up for renewal, about the value of that accreditation. And my understanding is that there's a movement of, in public health at this point, to start making accreditation one of the standards for being competitive with many of the grants that we pursue. So this is, this is an area that we have discussed, especially the value of the accreditation, whether we need to maintain it going forward. And, and public health feels that because of the significance of that consideration in, in grant funding, that it makes sense for us to do that. So it's less about the relationship with the other two cities, and more about our organization and, and what we do to position ourselves for success in the future.
And, and, uh, manager and mayor, this is another example of where I'm asking about the, you know, in terms of the philosophy, in terms of how we move forward. I do know, and I quite asked the question rhetorically, I do know there's going to be additional savings with some of the changes that are going to be made from, from public health within this area. And first you have to kind of put this investment forward, and then you kind of build it backwards. But I do think that if you see this just as a raw staff addition, you don't see that level of detail, again, when you're looking at this kind of linear in one, one year, either to, you know, Councilmember Beloga's point of view. But, but as we, as we look at these types of things, I think it gets a little bit tricky when we're, when we're looking at this stuff like this. Because, you know, a person who doesn't know the details of it wouldn't necessarily go, okay, well, what's going on in the background in terms of, you know, why are we doing this? There are some more changes that are being made within the, how public health is, is operating and working within the state of Minnesota nationally. So I, I do appreciate that, but I want to, again, make that point again that I made earlier, a little more concretely. Councilmember. Additional questions? Seeing none? Let's move on.
Next, Parks and Recreation Department, so twenty-four full-time employees and four regular part-time employees. Then there's around 200 seasonal part-time employees, mainly in the summer for Parks and Recreation. They oversee ninety-seven parks. As you know, they recently completed a robust park system master plan and provide recreational opportunities through their programs and facilities, and offer a wide variety of opportunities, people of all ages and abilities. And then also Creekside Community Center is also part of Parks and Recreation in the general fund. And the total budget for Parks and Recreation is $4.2 million. And if you recall, what's different in the 2022 budget is that doesn't have an internal charge from park maintenance from Public Works. We'll see that the park maintenance is in the Public Works general fund budget directly there. So in this budget, 2.5 million almost is for salaries and benefits, and that does include $464,000 for part-time seasonal staff, a little over a million for material supplies and services. Internal charges is $787,000. If we were to look at this budget last year, there would be around 6 million more in the internal charges there from the facilities fund for Public Works. And then a little bit of overhead charged to recreation funds that are not in the general fund. And then in the general fund, there's admin for Parks and Rec, Creekside Community Center. We've got our cultural, special events that include Summer Fest, historical sites and programs, Arts in the Parks, Farmers Market. And then the recreation budget is the last one there. And the one request for staffing changes is part-time Creekside Facility Lead. So this is a cost of a little over $19,000. And this is a part-time position that would work in evenings when there's paid rentals at Creekside. So the revenue from the rentals will pay for this position. So it would just be when needed, when they're trying to get additional parties renting space at Creekside.
Questions here? I think we're moving on.
All right, Public Works, 182 full-time employees, two regular part-time, and then numerous similar to Parks and Recreation. Our employee count goes up quite a bit in the summer for Public Works. And they're, you know, responsible for well-maintained streets and infrastructure, and efficient transportation network, maintenance to parks and buildings. And so next to Public Works, this is the other large line item in the general fund budget. And so 11.6 million salaries and benefits, almost 5 million material supplies and services, 6.3 for internal expenses. A lot of charges from fleet, for example, for the vehicles, the equipment that Public Works has. You have a little bit for capital. And then charges out to the general fund. And a lot of those, some are engineering costs, and charges that go out to capital projects are some of those, those overhead expenses. And then when you look at it by division, we've got Public Works Administration, Engineering Maintenance, which includes street lighting, traffic operations, street maintenance, and Park Maintenance, which is now a line item in the Public Works budget. And since the, kind of like I did for Police, I'm taking some of these bigger ones, like street maintenance and park maintenance, and then breaking those out further for you. You can see the breakout of Street Maintenance Division between Street Maintenance, General Pavement, Seal Coating, Public Right-of-Way, and Snow and Ice Removal. That's all within this Street Maintenance Division. And then for Park Maintenance, here's the breakout we have for Park Maintenance with Administration, Athletic Field Maintenance, Park Building Maintenance, Outdoor Skating Ranks, Trails and Courts, Playgrounds, Natural Resources, and then Normandale Lake, Bush Lake, and Aquatics. And so this is what we have for the kind of budget for starting for 2022, broken out into all these categories. We'll see, as we have the actual expenses for the first year in 2022, if we need to make some adjustments in these categories. But we are taking the budget that was really just in one activity that was in the Park Maintenance Fund and, and coming up with a budget for 2022. So we'll see if we need to, you know, adjust this as we go into future years.
Councilmember Beloga.
Thank you. Carrie, can you go back? Oh, you're on the screen. Somehow I'm having a hard time wrapping my mind around that the park maintenance cost of $6.5 million is a third of its cost in administration. Can that be explained to me?
Uh, yes. Mayor, councilmembers, Councilmember Beloga. So we have, I, a lot of the, we took the overall budget, basically, that was 6.5 million. A lot of this is salaries that is in this budget with the park maintenance employees. And, you know, went through and, and allocated out the amount of salaries for one employee among all of these different activities. And with, I think we have the supervisors and overall superintendent, assistant superintendent, still just in park maintenance administration overall. So it's us looking at something that was just park maintenance administration and trying to track costs in these different areas. And there's a, kind of the park maintenance administration is maybe more of an overall catch, catching everything that's not in these specific things that we want to track. So it's not really just the administration of it, but there's park maintenance employee salaries that are allocated to that first line as well.
I'm sorry, but I still have the same problem. And perhaps you can give some greater detail as we get closer to the approval of the budget to get more insight into this administration line item.
Uh, yes, I can do that.
Thank you.
And, and if I could just follow up, so just for clarification, park maintenance administration doesn't necessarily mean administration in the, in the supervision type of, basically, we're talking, this is park maintenance employees, right? Is that, is that what this is, or is this? So this is employees at all levels within park maintenance, not necessarily just the administration level, using that as a capital A, as opposed to a verb administrating kind of thing, right?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. That's right, Mayor. It's, maybe administration isn't the best label for that activity. It's more, I think a better activity would be general park maintenance as a label, what we call that. It's, it's all of the employees that are, because employees that are in park maintenance, they don't just work in one specific area, they do all of these things. And so based on, you know, what they have done in the past for coding like time cards, we took their salaries and benefits and then allocated on these 10 different activities. And the things that weren't specific for, let's say, athletic field maintenance or trails and courts, we put in that first one, which is our general park maintenance. So that, that helps explain it some, but I can get more detail as well.
So I, I would appreciate that. So how many, just if you know off the top of your head, how many employees are we talking about in that first line of park maintenance administration?
So there's, I think, eighteen park maintenance positions, and maybe, I'm doing this from, about, let's say, around eighteen or so. And then there's two supervisors and also a assistant superintendent position. But the salaries, let's say, of those eighteen park maintenance employees have been allocated over those 10 activities here. So like their one salary is not just 100% coded to park building maintenance. Their salary is being allocated across 10 activities, most of it in the park ma, that park maintenance administration line item.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Beloga, please.
A follow-up question, thank you. Carrie, so if, if an employee owes their time card to, let's say, grass cutting, to athletic field maintenance, then those charges are reflected as part of that. But if there's no coding on it, then it's part of administration. Is that what I'm hearing?
Yes, Mayor, councilmembers, Councilmember Beloga, that is a good example. That is correct.
Okay, and so since you don't have things such as general park maintenance, you know, you've got park building maintenance, but the grass in the parks need to be cut and that type of thing. And I'm assuming that that's all part of that 2.4 million dollars. Is that what I'm hearing?
Yeah, yes, Mayor, councilmembers, Councilmember Beloga, that is exactly correct.
Okay, so it's a, it's a nomenclature problem for me in that we call it administration, but it's really the work of maintaining parks other than those enumerated below.
Yes.
Okay, no further questions. Thank you for the explanation.
Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, Councilmember Beloga, do you have a suggestion of nomenclature that would be more clear for this purpose?
I would, I would say that, you know, we have a lot of parks that don't fall into these other categories. And I would say all other park maintenance is what that would be if I were-
General park maintenance or all other park maintenance, or something along those lines?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And I think we're in agreement there. Councilmember Beloga, I was getting hung up on that word as well, trying to figure out exactly how we were, this was working together. So glad we could clarify that and straighten that out.
Well, indeed, because I think the public looks at administration like we were in that that is the overhead. And to find a third of the cost in overhead, you know, is, is not the real facts of the case, nor the message we want to portray, I believe.
Agreed.
Good point.
Yep, that makes sense. Thank you.
Additional questions on this? All right, let's move on.
So the, the request in staffing change for Public Works, this is also a staffing change request in the Facilities Fund, if you recall from a couple of weeks ago, that to move the Assistant Facility Superintendent, currently is 53%, works in park maintenance, and 47% in facility maintenance. So before, all of that was within the Internal Service Fund, Facilities Fund. But now we've split out the, the park maintenance part of that, and rather than charging it back internally to Parks and Recreation, it's just a direct charge in the general fund under Public Works. And so in the Facilities Fund, in that budget, is a new position, which would be a Facilities Manager. But then, and that also incorporated moving this Assistant Facility Superintendent 100% to just park maintenance. So they would focus, for example, on natural resources management and projects identified in the park master, park system master plan that currently don't have someone that can take on that, that work. So that, that cost would be taking that additional 47% and moving it to the general fund. So that's $51,000.
And just to, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers of Angeles, clarify additionally what Kari was saying, that the, the Facilities Manager within the Facilities Fund budget, that fund budget was previously approved by the council. So the, and it included that position within it. So this is the general fund side of that position staffing adjustment. And this is a, this, this is a pretty significant recommendation that came out of our Park System Master Plan, was to make sure that we had this level of concentration and focus on our natural resource management.
Questions on this? Hearing none.
Wait, this is the last line item in our general fund expense summary. And then all it is, I just wanted to explain, together, it's $830,000. But that's made up of, we have a two and a half percent contingency of, of the total expenses, and that's about $2 million. And then, but we also, when we're doing the budget, we know that we are not going to spend our entire salaries and benefit budget, because we know at any given time we're going to have a number of vacancies, and then there's going to be some time for those get filled. And so we do also factor in $1,250,000 of what we call estimated unspent, just to, to acknowledge that and not have more property taxes that are necessary. So that those two together, the contingency and estimated unspent, our contingency is more, so it's an additional $830,000. That's, we're at the end of those. So I'm going to go, I'm just going to go into the Strategic Priorities Fund and show you that $600,000 that we moved over. So this, this fund is not one of the annual budgeted funds in that it is technically a capital projects fund. But often, or what we've done historically, is if there is positive budget variance, that comes in as a, as a revenue in this fund, that gets moved over from the general fund. comes in as a as a revenue in this fund, that gets moved over from the general fund. You can see, we just did that in 2021, that amount was $3 million. There's also been years where we've actually had it as part of the tax levy. We did not do that for 2020 or 2021. And then, you know, for modeling, we have what we're proposing as 600,000 of the 2022 property tax levy coming in as a revenue. We have a number in there for interest. And then I have 2019, 2020, those are actual numbers on those columns that are in, or the 2019 final, 2020 final. The num- the numbers that are in black there for 2021, and that column going down, those have actually occurred. So there was money that was transferred over to, for the HRA for expanded home improvement loans. There was money for community-based strategic planning, equity and inclusion initiatives, business survey, and then the tax levy stabilization amount for the 2021 budget. And each one of those, it's either part of the original budget that's approved by the council, or we bring them over individually to the council to transfer those items over. And so for 2022, what we have modeled is 1.1 million for tax levy stabilization. We also have that modeled for '22, '23, '24, '25. And that coincides with how long we think it's going to take before our lodging and emission tax revenues come up to the levels where they were before the pandemic, just to help so that it brings, keeps the tax levy lower than if we didn't have that. And then just what we have is kind of placeholders for things to spend that money in 2022. There's $100,000 for creative place making outside of South Loop, was something that the council had talked about. The ICMA fellowship is also another thing that had been talked about, I think, in earlier years, but pushed ahead a little bit. But for the racial equity inclusion, we took that from the general fund, that new position, we have it in here for strategic priorities. And then with the earned sick and safe leave or other compliance, we also moved that over here to strategic priorities. So things that, for when the council was talking about, something like a new initiative or something that maybe for the first year, it's funded out of strategic priorities as a strategic priority. And then we also have $500,000 as a placeholder for other, available for for other projects that the council might have. So you can see, we're estimating at the end of '21 to have a fund balance in here of about 7.2 million. And then you can see, the end of 2022, it would be 5.6 million, 5.7 million. And then, you know, we don't have anything modeled for positive budget variance, because, you know, we don't know for sure if we would have that. So we just have something modeled for tax levy support coming in, and some placeholders for money that this council could use going forward.
Councilmember Martin and then Councilmember Beloga. Councilmember Martin?
Thank you, Mayor. Just two quick ones here. So first off, from what I remember way back when we talked about Better Government Demonstration, More Depth, I remember there's a couple of software elements that kind of worked in tandem and were included in that. Is there, was was part of this project that the costs of those were waived for the first couple of years? Or is there going to be subscription fees we need to anticipate?
Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, Councilmember Martin, that's, your your recollection is accurate. And that was a program that was being advanced through the Mayor's Innovation Project. And the, I'm not sure that that specific demonstration project is still going to be available. But something similar to that with a couple of the same vendors is still moving with some other cities and facilitators. So this isn't committing the council to doing that. We have it identified as a potential project to move forward. Carrie is right, we were ready to move forward with it in 2020. And we're, we're actually in process of hiring an ICMA fellow to provide the staff capacity to manage that right when the pandemic hit. And so we we shut down that effort in 2020 and didn't move it forward in '21. So we're going to evaluate it again in 2022. And if it looks like it'll be something we want to pursue, pursue, present it to the council and get your direction on that.
Okay, thank you. And other question, and again, this might just be kind of in how it's labeled or how I'm conceptualizing, that 500 grand available for other projects, especially after the conversation we had around staff kind of really being pushed to the limit and needing some more support for the number of projects, initiatives, bringing forward, things like that. We've got a lot on our plate next year. And I think what we're funding out as strategic priorities is laid out pretty clearly here in Better Government, Racial Equity, all these things. So I'm just wondering what kind, if we're setting aside this 500 grand, do we have the staff capacity if we're going to shoot from the hip on a project mid-year, we need that cash available? So on a staff capacity side, are we anticipating being able to effectively spend that 500 grand? Or is this more just a fund stabilization pool to be able to backstop projects if costs are unexpected or the long-term stability of the fund? I just, I don't know if I want to allocate a half million dollars here just to allocate a half million dollars. So what's kind of anticipated there?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. Councilmember Martin, that's a good question. So if you if you look, so that's that bottom line you're looking at, the available for other projects, the 500,000 move across. If you bring your eye up to the the black numbers there in 2021, you see the 600,000 for the expanded home improvement loan program. Over the last several years, the council has utilized strategic priorities to fund a lot of the neighborhood reinvestment program. So typically, we have transferred that money into the HRA to make additional resources available and increase the number of loans that we can process. That's the majority of where those funds have gone. And again, it's going to be up to the council, your discretion, how you want to apply those funds. I think it's a good, a good observation, Councilmember Martin, to point out that, you know, we're talking about staff capacity issues. And if we're going to take on new projects, wanting to fully appreciate, you know, the impact of those. This is one where the existing staff, for the most part, has the capacity to process those. We were getting strained on our our loans, just because we were seeing pretty record interest in pursuing those loans. So we were doing an awful lot of them. And that was pushing staff capacity a little. But I think if the council wants to move away from what has previously been utilized out of strategic priorities, that's the right conversation to have, the one that you just posited there.
Okay, yeah, thank you. And that's, yeah, as you know, this conversation for us to have, because I I could certainly get excited about the improvement loans and continuing to to support that or expand that. I just, considering back in the envelope, that 600 grand is about a 1% levy increase.
That's correct.
To have $500 or $500,000 plugged in there and not do much with it, or had to consider a conversation, so.
Councilmember Beloga?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, part of what I wanted to discuss was the home improvement loan program. And for the last eight or 10 years, we've been additionally funding the HRA for that. What what this is, is that it it's hypothetically a cost, but it really is going into the revolving loan fund. So that in a year, if we received no payoffs on prior loans, other than the CBDG money, we would have no additional funds to loan during that year. And I think that's an important program for the community. And additionally, there is additional funding needs going out into the future for the HRA with the home loan ownership program, which in 2022 will be funded using stimulus money. But beyond that, it's an unfunded item that that's yet to be solidified. So we, there's more work to be done on that one. But not to program money for that, I think is something that you would want to address sooner rather than later. So that's my comment on the home loan improvement program and HRA funding requirements. Carrie, then the 11, or the million one, I look at the sources of revenue, and I don't find that million one in there. Can you help explain that to me? This is on the general fund balance.
Oh, yes, Mayor, Mayor, councilmembers, Councilmember Beloga, so when we were looking at the general fund fund revenues before, it would be included in the transfers from other funds. So there's quite a bit in there.
That 5.5 million dollar.
Yes, it's part of that.
Includes that million one?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I assumed it was in there, that I just couldn't get visibility and wanted to understand where it was. Thank you.
Additional questions on this?
I do have a couple of questions.
Councilmember Loman?
So from the fire pension piece of that, where's those reserves stored? And how much do we have for that? Is that here? Or has that been transferred over into the fire pension fund?
So Mayor, councilmembers, Councilmember Loman, we are, we will look at the fire pension fund in a little bit here. They have their own special revenue on budget. And so you can see, when transfers were made there, it went into their own fund, into the reserves there. And you can see how that looks right now.
Okay. And I just wanted to make sure that I had that right in my mind, that that, I'm going to see that when I, when I get there. And so that's one, one item. I just, I know we have kind of tapered that off, but I'm wondering if we ought not, at a lower rate, kind of continue if we have additional dollars left over year to year, to try to look to to continue to to put more dollars in there. If I'm understanding it correct, that we were going to taper that off or end that at some point?
So Mayor, councilmembers, Councilmember Loman, we actually have a direct, part of the property tax goes right into the fire pension now, as opposed to taking money from strategic priorities and.
Okay, that's just, we're doing that every year. Okay, all right. So we cover that, we get to there. I just, I, in my brain, I'm thinking, we used to always pull it out of here and then and put it in there. So just pardon me, my age is showing on that one. So then, another couple of questions that I had, in terms of, we take these loan dollars out here, or we have these loan dollars available, are there additional ways of coming up with that money? So for example, could we levy, you know, the HRA and the port have the ability to levy, is that a possibility that then rather than putting it here, we know we're going to get those dollars back? Is that a route or a direction to kind of go? I know we've talked about homeownership, you know, and I've always liked this idea of the strategic priorities in terms of trying to start something. And I just, I know that we saw a proposal, I don't know if it was a couple of weeks ago, around homeownership. And I'm wondering if there's a way to kind of reallocate these dollars that are here to try to help with that, and then maybe look for a more long-term solution as it relates to, you know, that that home loan piece, since we know those dollars are going to kind of come back, back into in the fund. So I just wanted to kind of throw that out for discussion or or thought.
Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, Councilmember Loman, if I may, on the, on the special levies, the HRA levy is currently at the maximum allowed by state statute. And so going forward, if the if the council wanted, if the council wanted to request the HRA to fund additional activities through their levy, that would be a decision they would have to approve, because the HRA signs off on the HRA levy the same way that the council does as well. So that would be a discussion to have between the two bodies. Because, you know, if you're going to add additional programming into that levy, then something would probably have to fall out of it. So that's why there'd have to be a discussion between the bodies. The Port Authority levy is authorized and has never been turned on. And I know that we had a very brief discussion about that in the most recent concurrent meeting of the Port Authority and the City Council. But that certainly is a conversation that you can take up leading into next year, because we're past the point where we could turn on the levy at this juncture.
Thanks for that. Yeah, that was mostly, I just thought the connection between the HRA and the, and that would be more, make more sense. I'd want to be careful about the going any other way with that. And I would just be interested too, in terms of what other councilmembers think in terms of the kind of converting some of those, some of these dollars that we have here for homeownership. I know that was one of our priorities that we had, I believe it was in our our equity policy that that came forward. So just want to kind of throw that out there in terms of, that's a good way to kind of spread some of those dollars around and push that 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 policy forward.
A good suggestion. Thank you. Additional questions, council? All right. I think we're moving on. Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to go through the remaining funds. So first of all, we're going through the four recreation funds. So golf and Dwan had a phenomenal year with great weather, very few rainout days. They hit 50,550 rounds, which was the highest number of rounds since 2005. And then also, as you know, the three rivers park district took over operations at Highland Golf this year, and that has gone very well. They will be giving a report to the council about that in December. And here is the the golf long-term model. And so you can see for 2022, so we don't have any of the Highland revenues, it's just the the Dwan revenues that are in there. The property tax was reduced from the 2020 budget down to the 2021 budget that was brought down. We have that at the same level for '22. So overall, if you were looking at, if you, there's just one golf fund. But if you broke that out between Dwan and Highland, and you were looking at working capital, Highland still has a a negative working capital balance, and then Dwan has a positive one. So when you put those two together, that's where we come up with, at the end of 2020, they were at $224,000 in total. But with how we're estimating 2021 to end with a gain of almost $500,000, that's going to bring that working capital balance up. And so we still do have a property tax subsidy, primarily because we're not at where we would like to be for the working capital goal for this fund. So we have, and as, you know, salaries and benefits and material supplies, other capital needs that we're looking at, especially for 2024. We do still are looking at a property tax subsidy for golf out in the other years, our years as well.
Questions on this?
Questions?
No, I don't see any hands up. Please, go ahead.
So for the, for big Bloomington Ice Garden, they serve a diverse clientele. Ages range from 3 to 83. They have programs, participants, they that include Bloomington Skate School, high school hockey teams, youth associations, camps, nationwide tournaments in amateur and professional figure skaters. And unlike golf, the pandemic, their revenues have not been great. And so especially for 2020 and 2021, so you remember, we had, there were closures and a lot of the restrictions that we and a lot of the restrictions that we had in place significantly reduced their revenues. So you will see that in a minute here when we look at their long term model. And then another, something new that is going to happen in twenty twenty two is that the city will be taking over concessions from the from Baja beginning next year. So where am I thinking of? Okay, before I get to the long term model, I will also talk about that there in this request, there is a staffing request for a additional maintenance worker. So in twenty nineteen, at the end of twenty nineteen for the twenty twenty budget, this position was approved, but then it was eliminated in the twenty one budget because it had not been filled yet. And but to help pay for this in the twenty twenty two budget, the contract with sentence to serve that does the cleaning or at the Bloomington Ice Garden that was ended and contractual services of ninety four thousand dollars were reduced. And then also, there will be a reduced part time building supervisor position. That'll be, those hours will go down by twenty four hours per week and the full time maintenance position will cover these hours. And then also, along with this, the additional full time position will provide more full time building coverage, resulting in improved customer service cleanliness and preventative maintenance. Okay, so now we have the long term model for the Ice Garden. And if you recall, like looking at the working capital balance and things are looking pretty good in twenty nineteen, twenty twenty. But we've with the revenues down significantly, as I said before. Though it's really eaten up some of the working capital balance for the Ice Garden. So it's it's remaining positive for the outlook. And hopefully we'll start coming up again and getting gains in here. But it has been a rough couple of years for the Ice Garden.
Any questions, comments, council? All right, I think we're moving on.
Okay, Bloomington Center for the Arts typically, normally years, over a hundred and thirteen thousand visits, annual arts related visits. So there's choir and music rehearsals, dance and art classes, gallery visits, ticketed events, all of that. Typically over a hundred thirteen thousand and over fifty thousand in annual attended annual attendance at ticketed events. And of course, countless other visitors for city and private functions. In twenty twenty one, they did receive a one time, one million dollar transfer from the endowment in twenty twenty one. And that's being used for capital improvements. There's no staffing requests for this. You can see that we do have, the working capital balance was green and then kind of yellow and red, but still just a little bit under that eighty percent that we'd like to see, that we would keep it yellow. And we do have some capital outlay plan that you can see. We've got quite a bit happening in twenty one and then some more continuing in twenty two and then some additional projects as well coming out. So that's, and then you can see the property tax subsidy for Center for the Arts is a million dollars.
Mr. Mayor and Councilmembers, Kari mentioned it. But for those who are listening and maybe are unfamiliar with that idea of the endowment that was released this year, when Civic Plaza and the Bloomington Center for the Arts was constructed twenty years ago or approved twenty years ago, the endowment was established to ensure that there would be a source of funds to specifically address capital issues when building reaches a certain age. And so that's why the million dollars that's transferred in is being programmed for capital replacement within the facility itself. That's consistent with how that fund was first established twenty years ago.
Thank you.
I don't see any hands, I think we can keep going forward.
Okay, Aquatics Fund has both the Bloomington Family Aquatic Center and Bush Lake Beach. So the Family Aquatic Center opened in nineteen seventy one. They have been experiencing some staffing challenges as a lot of different places have. But for lifeguards and other seasonal employees, it was a real challenge this year. Bush Lake Beach, beginning in twenty twenty, during the pandemic, we stopped charging for parking and now it's all, it's free access to the beach. We also no longer have seasonal staff for lifeguards concessions or the parking fee collection that we used to have. And overall, so that happened in twenty twenty and twenty one, there's been a very positive response from the public with those changes of having it open and accessible without having to pay for parking and not a lot of complaints with not having concessions or lifeguard staff. And Aquatics Fund is doing very well. The property tax levy was decreased by quite a bit last year and then kind of at the same level for this year. And that was because we used to have an amount that was transferred to facilities for pool replacement. Recall, that was around six hundred forty eight thousand and we stopped doing that. And that amount kind of accumulated to about five million dollars. And that will be used for some improvements in the pool. But when the assessment was done recently, it was found that we would not need a full pool vessel replacement in the near future. So there will be some things that are done with the funds that are in the facilities fund, but we are no longer accumulating in property taxes that amount every year. And so the total amount for property taxes for the Aquatics Fund is five hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. And like last year, that amount was split out between the pool and the beach, like three hundred sixty seven thousand for the pool and a hundred and forty eight thousand for the beach for twenty twenty two and and then the next year, we've got that all for the pool, kind of like how Highland and Dwan. When you look at the golf fund and one's working capital balance is really low and one was higher, we've kind of got that same thing happening with the pool and beach. So we just need to kind of even that out a bit. So the beach is is good and kind of more working capital than needed. And the pool is a little lower than it should be. So we're just going to have all of those property taxes go towards the pool activity within this fund.
So I was going to comment for the at the Center of the Arts, the the customer revenue, just the over the cliff drop off that happened from two thousand nineteen to two thousand twenty. I was going to, I was going to comment there, but then to go forward to the Aquatic Center and to see one hundred and two dollars of revenue in twenty twenty. I mean, that's just stunning and it can't be overstated the impact of of the pandemic and and all the mitigations that had to take place to ensure everyone's safety, the impact on on our city facilities and and that type of revenue. It's just, it is stark and dramatic when you look at those numbers. And and it's nice to see the rebound, but I think it also shows that that these these operations are, while they they do well and they do make money, they're they're on a, they're on a razor margin a lot of times and and it doesn't take much to to tip things over. Obviously, this is a very dramatic example, but it doesn't take much to tip it over one way or another. So, yes, just looking at that one hundred and two dollars customer revenue pool in twenty twenty.
Okay. All right, two more funds. At the Communications Fund and the Fire Pension Fund, there are two special revenue funds that have property tax support. So communications, full service communication shop devoted to educating and informing the community. They have news magazine shows, videos, cable casts, they're webcasting the City Council meeting right now. They maintain the city's website and social media, operate public access television, have the monthly briefing newsletter. And predominantly, they're supported by cable franchise fees, which have been declining or stagnating in recent years. But it's caused a need for more property tax support. So see how the working capital looks for the communications model? Their budget request is at one point eight million for revenue and then one point nine million for expenditures. The property tax is, it's an increase from from last year. So it was a hundred and seventy five thousand dollars, it's now two hundred and ninety five thousand dollars. And still the the largest source of income that comes in here are the franchise fees, the cable franchise fees. And then there's also the the public education government fees as well. And no, no staffing changes or requests for this.
Mr. Mayor and Councilmembers, as Kari referenced, the current environment of the of cable and and how people receive their video services and the the propensity for people to be cord cutting right now. This is one that we are watching closely in the next couple of years because it is really dependent on the franchise fee revenue, which is only collected from Comcast. We did have a competitive entry into the cable service with CenturyLink several years ago. And they have abandoned their franchise and shut down their operation after not making much of a go of it in a couple of years. So for people who are watching and maybe don't understand how the money flows for services like Hulu or Netflix or, you know, Amazon Prime or any of those, we we do not collect any franchise fee revenue from those providers. We we only collect the franchise fee from the cable company as allowed under the Telecommunications Act, the Federal Telecommunications Act. We only collect fee off of the video service. We do not collect a fee off of the phone or data service. So, you know, the more that people are moving to different providers for video service, the more that this revenue line item is is challenged.
And yet I do see, looking forward into the next couple of years, you still have the the one million forty, forty five thousand dollars. When do you expect that that would be revised one way or another? When will we have a better handle on the impact of the cord cutting?
I I would anticipate we're going to start to see it next year when we're looking at our budgeting. The last couple of years have been in a fair amount of flux and we've been looking at our actuals compared to budget and they've been queuing pretty closely. But it's definitely not a growth area and so we're going to have to start projecting our revenues in decline rather than stasis. The only, you know, way that it stays at that number is if if Comcast continues to raise the cost for video service, which means, you know, the percentage, as the cost goes up, we we get more because it's based on a percentage. But the trade off there is that as costs go up, customers are going to look at other options as well. So it's a real, it's a fine line for Comcast to maintain the business and it's a fine line for us to have to be able to forecast those with any accuracy right now. I'd say this is going to be relatively volatile in the next couple of years.
Thank you. Councilmember Coulter.
Thank you, Mayor. Excuse me, well, this is obviously hitting on on kind of what we've already discussed. But moving forward, I mean, I I think it's obvious that we're we're going to have to think about something different than franchise fees. So it would be helpful, you know, it would be helpful moving forward to know what what those thoughts are. If it is just sort of a one for one replace franchise fees, franchise fees with property taxes or if it's something else, what that looks like is, I mean, this is, you know, this is not just, franchise fees is not just the communications fund. It's trails and and things like that. So this is, this is something we're going to have to to confront in a number of different ways.
Just to clarify, Mr. Mayor and Councilmembers, Councilmember Coulter, the franchise fee that comes into this fund is very specific just to the Comcast franchise. So it doesn't, this this doesn't go towards roads or trails or any of that. It's, it comes exclusively into this fund.
Yes, sorry, I meant generally in terms of where we know franchise fees are heading and and the reality of that, that franchise fees generally is a revenue source.
I see, I understand, okay, thank you.
Council, additional comments? Onto fire pensions.
Okay, so the paid on call firefighters, if they serve for twenty years, they qualify for a pension. And it's where where the financial markets are are at the end of the year have a big impact on the annual pension obligation from the city. So in years where the investment returns at year end were not great, the city had to contribute significant amounts. So we had, the city had an obligation to add an additional three point eight million dollars in both twenty twenty and twenty eleven after that recession that preceded that, those years.
Sorry, Kari, just to quickly interrupt, you said twenty twenty and twenty eleven, you meant twenty ten and twenty.
I'm sorry, yes, twenty ten and twenty eleven, not not now. Um, no, fortunately, investment returns in the twenty twenty were were great. And so the pension, because of those investment returns, was one hundred and twenty seven point eight two percent funded. And that means that there will not be a pension obligation for the twenty twenty two budget. So it only requires us to transfer the state by need that we receive from the state of about six hundred and sixty three thousand to the pension. So here you can see what it looks like. So we've got the property tax support of one million fifty thousand dollars plus some interest income. We we do receive some state aid around six hundred thousand, six hundred fifty thousand or so. Whatever we see for state aid that just gets transferred through the fire pension. You can see in in twenty nineteen and twenty twenty, we did have some transfers in from strategic priorities. And then we have, you can see what we had to pay for a fire pension was in twenty nineteen, it was again only the pass through of the state aid. In twenty twenty, we had to pay two and a half million in total for the fire pension obligation. And then for twenty one, like one point four million. But again, for twenty twenty two, what's nice is we know what we're going to have to spend already because it's a couple, it's based on the, you know, two years before, how the markets end. So we know we just have that pass through. But what we kind of average estimate in years going out, because we don't know, is about two and a half million. And then having a work, working capital goal in addition to that of two and a half million in case we get a year where we have a significant obligation that we need to make. Another thing that we're doing in this fund is with the fire stations. Before the bonds are issued, there are some costs for fire station design. So what we're doing is we're kind of temporarily loaning some money from fire pension to facilities, like around five hundred thousand dollars, for example, in twenty twenty two. And so that will go to facilities. And then, I'm sorry, we did that in twenty twenty one. And then when the bonds are issued, that'll get reimbursed, the five hundred thousand will come back in twenty twenty two. So it's not a permanent transfer for those facility to facilities for those fire stations design costs. It's just kind of a year before the bonds come in and then we get reimbursed by the bonds. But things are very well funded. It looks like we're going to be in good shape, especially with how the markets ended at the end of twenty twenty two. But this one's a little unpredictable depending on if we get to a year where the investment returns do not look good for the. where the investment returns do not look good for the um pension funds and then we have to contribute more from the city.
I think a little unpredictable is a, is, is an understatement there based on what we've seen over the past decade or so. Councilmember Lowman, a question?
Yeah, and so I, I wanted to ask that, so um, and, and I don't wanna knock on some wood here because I don't want to doom myself. Um, but uh, you know, I mean, I noticed that we've had, you know, you, 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 you started off by talking about, you know, the, those couple of years where we did have to put the three point eight million in there. And, you know, I'm looking at this, you know, and um I, I would assume that we would have to pull out of that working capital uh to do that, uh in order to accomplish that. And so I just want to make sure I understand this, this correctly. We uh discontinued uh putting money in uh, you know, from the strategic priorities in twenty twenty. The additional dollars that we're adding each year now are, what's that number look like?
And, go ahead.
One million fifty thousand?
And so, um, and so, you know, and I see our, our goal here, but I'm just imagining where we get hit two years in a row. I mean, I know that isn't necessarily the, the, the number that we, we need to budget out, but are we saying that, and, and I can't, I can't remember, I wouldn't even hear, but uh twenty-ten and twenty-eleven, was it three point eight total? Or was it each, each hit? And so, you know, if you kind of do that, that math, I just, I, I, I mean, I'm not saying that we, that would happen again. Maybe it's three times in a row, I don't know, you know. But uh, you know, I just, I, I just want to be sure that we uh are, is there, i- if we decide that there's nothing else that we're gonna do with that strategic priority dollars, maybe it does make some sense to keep this, you know, on, on the list in terms of something to, to, to put that money um aside if we don't have any other priorities in terms of uh putting it there. Um, and that we, we wouldn't necessarily need to do uh five hundred, five hundred thousand. We could do, you know, you know, you know, half of that or, or uh, you know, or some other number. But I just think it'd be prudent uh for us to at least get ourselves uh in the working capital standpoint, back to where we had uh, you know, that if we had a double hit, because we've seen that in the past. And we know that history doesn't, you know, it, it rhymes and it doesn't, it doesn't repeat itself. But I, I would feel a lot better if we could get ourselves closer to, to that number. Um, and I know we're on our way, but uh, uh, but I just wanna, wanna point that out. And I know things have looked good, but you just never know when, when the, when the, when the shoe drops.
And agreed, councilmember, and yeah, we, and councilmember Beloga and I, we're on council when that happened, the three point eight million each of the, the two years. And, and uh shortly prior to that time, the, the council actually had to bond to pay for the fire pension requirement. So, which is why I think the, the policy decision was made, the top line there under property tax, that a million dollars committed each year and, and into the future to, to make sure that we build up that working capital balance and to at least have that cushion in place. Now, yes, worst-case scenario, does it, does it exceed that? Well, yes, but then we, we at least have, we have that capital balance in place and we have, uh, it, it's not as much of a hit as it was um a, a decade ago. And, and because, yes, that, I mean, that's pretty, that's significant. And we were able to, I think we, we're in a much better position now to deal with that type of thing than we were then.
And I guess, you know, I'll say this last thing and I'll, and I'll, I'll shut up. But uh, you know, I think some of the priorities in terms of that we, we're, we're talking about in terms of a council, we have something happen like that and it set some of our other capital ideas, um, you know, back a while. And I just, I, I want to just be sure that we're just being diligent with this area, you know, to get us as close to that, that number um as possible. And um kinda hoping that we won't get back to that, you know, uh anytime soon, but uh.
Any other comments on that? Questions?
Yes, now, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, councilmember Lowman. The other unique thing about the fire pension fund is that we have uh more advanced time knowing what our obligation is going to be than just about any other obligation that we have to budget for. As we find out at the beginning of one calendar year, what our obligation is going to be for the subsequent calendar year. So we actually have a fair amount of uh, uh planning time built in to address any potential uh, uh negative trend in the, in, in the pension fund itself.
All right, let's keep moving, if we could.
Okay, so I have three slides here now for um, there's like just taking the staffing requests and summarizing them. Um, one is for full-time, new full-time positions. One's for part-time and one is for um reclassification requests. And so uh the, the first three here are in finance. Uh, the first two would require um additional property tax support and that is included in this two point seven-five percent uh levy increase. And then the utility billing org and its position that does not have additional property tax support, that is in the utility funds that have been um already approved. That expense would be there. Um, and then the community um development, just for the full-time, it's two new full-time positions. And I have the, those, um, if, if you wanted to do those, those are, um, would be covered by the revenue for that program. Um, the planner position on the um public health specialist position as well as the percentage of the assistant facility superintendent. Those all would also have additional um property tax support. I know we did talk about having like the public health specialists. There might be some um grant funds, but we don't have that specifically as additional revenue for this. So I, I just have that on the additional property tax support column. And then the ice garden maintenance worker, um, those are um kind of offset with other expenses that were reduced. So it's not, there's no additional um property tax for the ice garden fund for that. So that's, that's summary. And then um for part-time positions, the part-time um HR office assistant is the only one that's additional property tax uh support. Um, the other two, the one for the time of sale um program, part-time building inspection aid, be covered by additional revenue. And then same with the part-time facility lead at Creekside, that would be additional rental revenue, that would cover that. And then last is um it's kind of staffing reclassification requests. Um, uh, the big one there is the one point one million dollars. I wasn't quite sure where to put that one, but that's um for the additional duty crew hours of pay. Um, but then the other three, it's the uh reclassifying, the racial equity coordinator, police records position to a supervisor and then the property control specialist and police from part-time to full-time. Those are those um different staffing requests in summary.
Well, you've, uh, I, I know you've heard the conversations we've gone through the presentation tonight. Uh, I'd ask two things, council, is there anything more you'd like to add to the conversation that we've had? And then I would ask any members of staff, if, as you've heard the conversation, any additional clarifying questions from council that you'd like to ask of council? Councilmember Coulter.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, excuse me, I don't need this tonight, but um it would be helpful to have just sort of the top-line number of FTEs at the city um or what the request is for, for twenty twenty-two. Um, and then the numbers for twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty as well to just um compare those numbers so we can kind of get that sense of it as well.
Anything additional?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, if I may, if council doesn't have additional comments or questions. Cory, can you go back? Uh, there you go. The um, just looking for, let me try to summarize what I heard during the discussion about the time of sale program changes and uh make sure that I have an understanding of what council's looking for. The, what I, what I heard council saying was that there's a concern about bringing the time of sale program entirely in-house uh for inspections. Uh, and I, you know, I just want to be clear about the, the concern around the um new positions, if it is something other than uh that. The, the proposal itself is a net positive to the general fund budget, that the additional uh inspections uh fees will uh be more than what we are proposing to spend with the new staff position. And, you know, with the, with the new inclusion of the energy components into the time of sale, you know, there's a, there's an additional uh information and training uh requirement that's gonna have to be implemented pretty quickly for us with uh private inspectors. Um, so I just, I'm, I just want to understand the nature of the concern so that we can address it better in, in subsequent information that we provide.
Councilmember Lowman?
So to that specific question, uh, I would like to understand the consistency piece that staff has brought forward. Um, uh, you know, if that happens in the private market, uh, what does that look like? Um, you know, certainly my colleagues have, I think we were pretty uh clear in terms of what's the impact from the private sector in terms of, is there a way to accomplish that or, or, or do that? Um, in, in terms of weighing, you know, what that means, uh, you know, from a, from a market analysis, you know, well, how did staff come to that conclusion that we want to get into that, uh, that piece? But for myself, it's, it's simply the, the consistency piece across the marketplace uh when we're providing that, that service um with the way that that, uh, the way that we've written that ordinance. Um, I do want to make sure that there is some consistency across that. If that can be provided in the private sector, certainly I'm, I'm, I'm open to that. But uh, uh, that, that's my main question.
Councilmember Beloga?
Mr. Mayor, uh, Mr. Manager, my comments were really directed to the process. That uh budget time was not the appropriate time to have the discussion about moving things uh from the market into uh city staff or vice versa. So um, you know, financially, as you pointed out, it really doesn't have any uh negative full impact uh to the general fund. So it's more of a process uh component.
Understood. Thank you.
Anything else? Councilmember Nelson, you had questions? Did, did you want to summarize or bring them forward? Anything beyond which we talked about earlier?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Hopefully you can hear me. Um, no, I, I agree with uh councilmember uh Beloga, councilmember Lowman. And I, I think there's a process question. I think there is a substantive question about what we do and I look forward to a greater conversation.
Thank you, councilmember. Mr. Brugge, does that help?
That does. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Let us move forward.
So this slide is uh where we're at right now with a proposed twenty twenty-two tax levy. And so it's just some things to point out. Um, the differences from twenty-one is seven hundred and seven thousand more for the general fund, um one hundred and twenty thousand more for communications, six hundred thousand for strategic priorities. There was not an amount set aside for strategic priorities um last year. And then uh almost four hundred thousand for debt service. And um what that equates to for the median value home is a hundred and one dollars and twenty-eight cents per month, which is ten dollars and twenty-three cents for a month um compared to last year or to twenty twenty-one, which is an eleven point two-four percent increase. Um, and as we were talking about um earlier with uh kind of how the breakout of single-family residential um homes, their overall property tax increase, um, it was, the majority were between uh five and fifteen percent. Um, another thing I added here was I took that um, the tax levy increase and split it out by the, the change that's based on this tax levy increase and the change that's based because of the market impact and of the um commercials shifting to the residential as far as the tax burden. So that ten dollars and twenty-three cents, the increase of two dollars and ninety-three cents a month is based on the tax levy increasing by one point eight million. But the um, the, the rest of that, that's seven dollars and thirty cents a month is based on the market impact of the home values going up higher. Um, and then the commercial properties declining. Um, and then we take that into percentages. It's uh three point two-two percent based on the tax levy and eight percent based on market impact.
Uh, if, if you could go back one, and, and I think you had mentioned it earlier, uh, councilmember um Lowman has a question also, but you mentioned, you may have mentioned it in a golf discussion, but for how many more years do we expect the one hundred and sixty-one thousand dollar subsidy for golf?
Uh, Mayor, councilmembers, um, it depends on what uh we want to, what it, want to do for capital needs at the, at the um Edwong Golf Course or for Highland Golf Course as well. So um, you know, maybe like once, it should be maybe two to three years before um the, the negative balance at Highland is gone, but then it's still probably not gonna be um where we want it for the goal. Um, but let's say like two to three years before it's, it's not negative anymore. Um, but then depending on what kind of um, kind of resources you want to put in for, for the golf courses and what kind of improvements are you would like to do. Um, potentially you might want to have a property tax um support to help with that. So, but as far as if you're just looking at the negative working capital balance for Highland, uh, two to three years.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Lowman?
Thank you. Um, I, I just want to just say how much, I just want to stress uh how, how helpful this piece right here is that staff has, has put, uh, put forward here in terms of that change based on tax levy and the change based on the market impact. I wish, you know, and I don't know if I, maybe, maybe I don't want to ask this question, but I'm gonna ask it anyways. Um, and it may not be able to be done, but I just wonder for those folks who, you know, receive their, their, their tax bill, if there's a way to, to quantify that for them uh so they could look at that and see that. Cause I just think that that is uh from a residential perspective. I think there's a lot of, and I, I know that, it's, when I say that, I know how complex that is because you've got, you know, you've got Henne County, you've got all sorts of things going in there. But I, I just, um, and I, and at risk of not, you know, I don't want to give us, give us any more work, but I want the public to understand uh, you know, these shifts and these changes that are, that are here um from when we uh, and, and there's an impact, you know, of, of doing that, that, that two point, you know, seven-five, if that's what we end up uh doing um from a long-term perspective. But I also think that folks need to understand how lucky we really are from a city perspective in terms of when that, when that shifts the other way. There's a benefit uh to that shift. Um, and uh, and what we get here that uh really from a long-term perspective, what you get um as a resident, that, that's a, that's a great, that's a great deal. Um, and so we need to, to take advantage of that as we continue to, to invest in our community. Um, so again, thank you staff for uh putting this together and really making this as clear, one of the most complicated things to uh, to understand for the, for the general public to, to, to grasp and, and understand.
Additional comments? I thought we got twenty-two nailed down. What is, what's for twenty-three?
So this is what I have um forecasted for twenty-three. So additional support um for communications there, some additional support for uh general fund. Um, also ice garden, just looking at, if you remember their working capital model and their um, the, the long-term budget model and their working capital that's in the red. Um, so it kind of depends on how things look for revenues. Um, I did have the strategic priorities um just coming back down to five hundred thousand. And then um, then the debt service, I think there's been many conversations about um what's needed in um facilities improvements and uh debt service. So I have that just. facilities improvements and debt service. So I have that just at the 1.5% there. Kind of all that together, it would be 4.2%. And I'm sure you'd want to know how that would look for the median value home, but I don't have that that information yet from assessing. I just have the kind of increase in tax levy potentially. And then what percentage of increase that would be?
Council, any comments or questions on this very preliminary projection for 2023?
Mr. Mayor, if I may, and Council can certainly jump in as well. I think one of the things that's that jumps out to me about this number, this 4.26 number is that i- if you were looking at this number for this year, granted at 2.75, we are the lowest of 15 other communities that are sort of our peer communities that we compare to. This number were this year, we would still be lower than 13 of those 15 cities. So, you know, if folks are wondering about how we're doing and trying to manage our our levy and minimize to the extent we can the impact of property taxes from city operations on taxpayers and still maintain our services, I think that's a pretty compelling story.
Seeing no other hands up? Let's bring this on home, should we?
Okay, so I have some feedback from our community engagement. If you recall, there were two opportunities in October for public to participate in the budget information sessions, roundtable discussions. And then in addition to those, we had community conversation that was listed on Let's Talk Bloomington, which is still active and open for responses. So we had some questions that were on Let's Talk Bloomington and also at those roundtable discussions after the public budget engagement sessions. So just here's, we just put everything up here for you to see. So what's your favorite city service? So we can see them displayed here. They said the pool, Public Works, Creekside, the ones that, you know, have times three. So Farmer's Market came up three times, Police Department three times, Fire Department twice, Parks three times, Snow Removal Dog Park. I won't read all of them. You can see them here, but curb side organic, some people are excited about that. Concert Series, Natural Resource Efforts. So those are favorite city service. These were the responses. And then when asked what city service or area in the city would you like to see more investment in and why? The responses we received were they'd love to see more investment in bike infrastructure in the city. The Fire Department needs more investment. There's people talking about struggling with how to deal with homelessness. And they love the idea of tiny homes and very intrigued to see if there's a way that Bloomington can provide clusters of tiny homes for homeless people or grants. And then, you know, there were opinions, this person had said, like, rather than adding more services, we need to stick to the core services and that other organizations could offer more of the social services and need to really watch what a city should provide and not offer things that can be addressed other places. Continuing on, there's more responses to this. What city service or area in the city would you like to see more investment? This was about neighborhoods, about as far as could be expensive or cause division. That was someone had talked about in that session about you know, having kind of like Minneapolis with specific neighborhoods that were identified. So they they didn't think that would be a good idea. More children activities. Kids feel like they're more a part of the community. There was some talk about that they felt that there was a disconnect between this, you know, today and today's environment between cities and small towns and suburbs and rural areas. Like they'd love to have, see a program to have Bloomington use its status as a leader to reach out to rural and small towns and possibly bring more investment in Bloomington. And another thing, another idea, any investment that allows us to generate more revenue for public private partnerships as opposed to relying on tax revenue. And then kind of brought this neighborhoods like Minneapolis and St. Paul to find neighborhoods, and we don't have that in Bloomington. Could be a way for a city to encourage more involvement, giving people more of a sense of belonging. So lots of different ideas. And then we had more police officers, more firefighters, more things for elderly residents, like what Creekside has, expanding on that. Additional social workers. I think that was more with the Police Department, you know, adding on to what they have now. More resources in public health, diversifying economic development. More about infrastructure, like having biking that's separate from the roadway. So it's safer. Natural resources restoration and maintenance. That it needs to be a city priority, more public safety. That Bloomington's safety was important, less crime, less murders, more 911 dispatch, more officers. And then the this question was what advice do you have for the City Council as you cite your final 2022 budget and tax levy? This person had said tighten up the budget, make it as lean as possible. Don't add regulations that cost more taxes. They're stressed financially and energy costs are going up as well. Another person said they think that they think the city has it covered pretty well and that it's like between a rock and a hard place prevents them from really addressing property taxes, which have become somewhat burdensome. Trying to balance of the cost of city services and then the burden of property taxes. This person said you guys are really well organized, well presented, very transparent. Appreciate that everyone works hard for the taxes that we pay and aligned to the values and long term strategy. And best balance possible, knowing that not everyone gets everything, but gets something. So balancing that out. And continuing on, this person had said stick to the basics of local government, water, fire, police, roads, not try to be all things to all people. Another person said beware the desire to host the World Fair and the negative impacts on residents. Someone else had said restructure City Council for a strong mayor model.
Thanks for that, Dwayne. That's nice.
And then better community engagement. Appreciate staff's community engagement efforts. I would greatly encourage a process that reflects the fact that effective engagement requires relationships and tapping into community led activities that occur at the community level. So inviting people to city events are not as engaging, powerful as the city encouraging, supporting and attending community events. And then these were outside of those sessions we had or outside of Let's Talk Bloomington, or these are just emails that I've received or phone calls. This person had said that they thought the property tax levy of an increase of 2.75% was reasonable and fair. Thank you for your fiscal restraint. Talked about over 20 years dealing with several departments and being professional, courteous and helpful. So they're a homeowner in several surrounding cities and a former general contractor. So they were applauding us for that. And then another person said I'd lived here all my life and I really like how transparent you were being and sharing this information with the community and asking for input. Another person shared that they thought that there should be some type of exception to opt out of organics recycling if you are already doing it. And then another thing that was shared was for us to for Bloomington to to look into how other cities like Richfield do their tier rates and have three rates. So not just tier one and tier two, but tier one, two and three and tier one not starting until 15,000 gallons. And then resident questioned about needing to plow the parking lots of Dred Scott and other parks in the winter when other than skating rinks, they felt that there wasn't a demand for those needing to be plowed in the winter and that it was a waste of resources and greenhouse gas emissions. So just wanted to share all those because we said that at this council meeting, we would share those. So wanted to go through that. And then the last thing I have, the last, unless there's any comments, I knew that.
Onward.
Public participation recommendation. This is what City Staff has come back with after talking about this on November 8th and what we're going to do. So our recommendation just for this coming year is that we recommend not having a community budget committee or task force next year. Just because as we, you know, were listening to what the council discussion was and analyzing that and thinking about what we would do or recommend, there did not seem to be a strong consensus that we should have a committee or what exactly the committee would focus on specifically and accomplish with respect to the 2023 budget. So however, I think we have this model that we can enact in future years if there's a specific budget issue. The council could approve by resolution to create a citizen budget committee or citizen budget task force. But couldn't come up with a recommendation of what they would work on for the 2023 budget. So we're going to continue to build and improve on the public engagement around the budget that we've already started as well as we'll add a budget portion to town hall meetings when we're able to do this town hall meetings again and able to safely have those. There was a lot of talk about the positive response to the town hall meetings and having, you know, not the whole thing being budget, but part of it be discussing the budget. And then also I think this came up in the community feedback as well about focusing on going out into the community to where the people are. Making sure to include diverse partner organizations. I know as I shared before, we had a lot of effort trying to get people to come to our, you know, participate in our public budget engagement events and there wasn't a lot of interest in those. So I think going to where people already are, there are already events similar to what we did do for the midweek Farmer's Market will be an approach that we want to work on. That's it.
That is it. Council, any comments, questions, anything to add at the end here? Councilmember Coulter?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, first of all, Kari, thank you for all of this. This was, this was a lot of work. I at one point foolishly told my wife, oh, we might be done by eight o'clock. And and really that was that was my own fault for for putting a timeframe on it. But I guess just to sort of this this last piece here. I mean, you all obviously know where I I stand on on public engagement in the budget process, but I just I want to encourage all of us, staff and and council to think about ways that that we can give the community, you know, not necessarily this sort of direct involvement that a task force or a committee would involve, but but just a greater sense of ownership over budget priorities. Because I I think, you know, when when I talk to folks about budgets and taxes and so on, you know, the the sense I get is that most folks I think are are for the most part on board with with how the city is managed financially. But it it just still feels like there's a lot of folks feels like feel like there's a disconnect between the things they say, you know, to whether it's to a council member in an email or at the doors or, you know, wherever else, whatever thoughts they have and how those things get, how those priorities, how those questions, how those concerns get incorporated into budget discussions. And so that's, I think, really just something all of us should think about moving forward is what are we doing to? Essentially, I guess what I'm saying is give the community ownership over the budget in some sense, the way they feel it over parks or or other services or or programs like that, that folks feel like they are are personally involved in that process so that there isn't that disconnect. And that that's just something I'm going to be thinking about over the next few months as well.
Anything else folks would like to add? Okay, I just want to say thank you. It's it's been fascinating over the past 10, 11, 12 years, however long it's been, to see how this this budget discussion has evolved with the City Council. And I think we're getting to the point, I I mean, I've never seen a presentation like this in front of the City Council before with this much detail, this much information. Frankly, this kind of conversation, this kind of back and forth and televised live and available recorded for everybody to watch and see. This is this is, we talk about public engagement and this is a good example of it. It's a component of it. It's not the be all and end all, but it's a component of it. And I appreciate that. I appreciate the work that you put into this. I appreciate the details and just I appreciate that it's being done. I think it's a it's a good way to communicate and to explain and to to bring people along with the budget process in ways that haven't been done in, you know, in in years past, I think. So this is an outstanding way of doing it, I think. So thank you for that. Well done. And if you could pass it on to your staff who helped pull all of this together because my goodness, I hope you didn't do all 60 of these slides, but if you did, good job.
Thank you.
Well, thank you, Mayor. I appreciate you acknowledging Kari's work and also want to acknowledge Brianna Ekeldinger, who provides a lot of assistance for Kari in in preparing this material. But really our whole our whole budget team, which includes our CFO, Lori Economy Scholes, our assessing staff, Matt Gerschman, Mark Reichel, we meet with them on a on a weekly or biweekly basis for the better part of six to eight months while we're putting all this information together. And then certainly all the inputs from staff throughout the budget process. So appreciate the acknowledgement. It's a big lift and I I agree with you. Kari's done a fantastic job in in making it digestible for just about anybody.
Absolutely. And so if you could, Jamie, if you could give us, give us all and anybody watching, next steps here on the budget process?
Mr. Mayor and council members, we will follow up with responses to questions that we heard throughout this process. We do have some possible time on the agenda next Monday, but we we don't have a lot of time to turn around some of these responses because of the Thanksgiving holiday and time to get them into the packet and and maybe to prepare discussion for the 29th. What we will do is prepare for the December 6th Truth and Taxation Hearing. That's the the notice public hearing. So when folks receive their notice of proposed taxation that arrived in the mail probably last week, it had a date and time on there for December 6th at 6:00 PM for the City of Bloomington's Truth and Taxation Hearing. And that's an opportunity for residents to speak to the council regarding the proposed taxation. We will, we will have responsive information if not before. It will be in that packet. And then if there are some questions about policy issues or budget decisions that the council may want to make based on those areas that we know you're particularly interested in, I'll work with Kari and Lori to figure out how we can present it in a way that the council certainly has options to address those on the 6th. You also do have the option of deferring the final budget decision to Monday, December 20th. So if there is more discussion that is necessary before coming to a decision, you have that time available to you as well.
Thank you for that. Also, is there anything else on this? Nothing else on this item. We'll move on to our final item of the night. For those of you turning in late, we actually moved 2.2 to the beginning of our agenda. So we are done with that. Item 2.3, our City Manager and Council Updates. Mr. Brugge, anything to add?
Mr. Mayor, I did want to point out a couple of upcoming events that I know council is aware of, but we have a ribbon cutting for the next, the Phase Two of the the Aeon Project over 86th and Cedar. That is coming up on December 9th, I believe. It's a virtual event, so it won't be an actual snipping of the ribbon. But it'll be, it'll be a nice celebration nonetheless of a pretty significant investment that the City Council and the HRA made to provide additional units of housing that's affordable for people in our community. And then we also do have the opening of the BRT Orange Line is coming up as well. And I know that that event is on the calendar for council members in the near future too. And I know that that event is on the calendar for council members in the near future too. That's all I have to report tonight, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Council, anything to bring forward tonight? Councilmember Loman?
Just two real quick things. Last week, that was the National League of Cities Conference that was supposed to be in Salt Lake City, but it was switched over to be a virtual conference. They had a number of different themes for the National League of Cities, it's a training program and also a networking opportunity for leaders across the country. Their themes were around sustainability, resilience and equity were, were all the, the main ones. And they also announced a, a partnership between the N L C and Sister Cities organization, which I thought was a real interesting type thing, try to encourage peace in these times, both domestically and internationally. So I thought those were real interesting things. Secondarily, I wanted to bring forward, Mayor, I've been getting quite a few emails with folks who are concerned about, you know, just crime generally in the, in the community. And, and I, again, not, I wouldn't say today we necessarily have to cover this, but I do think that there is just a need to have a understanding. I know we did it a couple of weeks back where we had a conversation around, you know, crime just generally and, and what can be done. I think today we, we saw that, you know, the city is, is putting a sizable amount of its resources into public safety. And it's not just, it's beyond just the policing piece, we also invest in that as well. But I, I wonder if it makes some sense to give a little bit of a, a check-in so that folks can kind of have a better understanding in terms of what the numbers look like. So in, in some comparisons in terms of how we look, so that folks have a better understanding of kind of where we're at from a public safety perspective. And then as we look at budgets kind of going forward, you know, maybe it makes some sense to, I know I saw on the thing up here we need to add more officers, you know, does it make sense to do that or not, you know, what, what makes sense, so.
Council, anything else? Well, I will just add, this being Thanksgiving week, I want to say thanks to everybody. Thankful that we, thankful to be able to work with everybody, with this council, with the staff, with the residents of the City of Bloomington, thankful to be able to do this. This is, we've got a lot to be thankful for, we really do. The challenges, certainly, but I think we can all agree that we've got a lot to be thankful for. So hope everybody enjoys the Thanksgiving weekend, the Thanksgiving holiday, hope you, you celebrate it in the best way that you can and the best way that you know how. And I hope that by early Saturday evening, I'm standing on the field at U S Huntington Bank Stadium, celebrating a go-for-win. That's, that's what I will be most thankful for. So with that, Council, I would look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved, Coulter.
Second, Martin.
And a motion and a second to adjourn, hearing no further council discussion. Mr. Brillard?
Carter?
Aye.
Coulter?
Aye.
Loman?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
And it appears we lost Councilmember Nelson here, no longer in the meeting. Mayor Bussey?
Aye. Motion carries six zero. We are adjourned. Thank you all very much. Have a great holiday weekend, folks.
Thank you, Council.